Let's get back onto the next topic, which is students' rights and responsibilities. We are scheduled to have, we are scheduled to have a two-hour discussion on this one. And we have bold action scheduled for this Thursday, June 20th. And I'm hoping that we can complete our discussion and also, and have an opportunity to discuss any potential additional amendments any board member has on his or her mind. With that, there is an invisible person sitting in our room, Dr. Scott Braybrand. Can you hear us?
Yes, Mr. Moon.
All right. So you want to introduce your staff members sitting in this room? I don't know whether you can see them.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's a great Monday, and I know you've been busy already doing very meaningful work around discipline. I just have a few opening comments before I turn it over to Dr. Duran and his team. Many of you know that over a year ago, Dr. Duran, after you all passed the One Fairfax policy, and he was named Chief Equity Officer, that we brought really a whole portfolio of areas that we could apply an equity lens to Fairfax County Public Schools. And two of the areas that this board prioritized, one was discipline and the other was advanced academics. And both of them, you had asked us to really take a step back and reflect, bring in an outside set of consultants to really help us have that fresh perspective. And the advanced academic work is continuing and hopes to be finished at the end of the calendar year. And we committed to you to doing the discipline work here in June, and now June is here and arrived. And you've spent a lot of time this morning getting to hear the recommendations. And I want to thank all the consultants for coming in and giving us a fresh new perspective on our policies, on our glows and grows. I want to thank Oracy and Leedy and her team for taking a look at best practices nationwide and looking at some of our data around discipline. And of course, Dr. Duran and his team, Teresa Johnson, all of the folks that are there today, pulling together an equity plan, a multi-step equity plan, to really move us forward. And that moving forward includes reviewing our SRNR. And we're bringing to you today several substantive changes to the SRNR. We recognize the importance of taking a fresh look at the SRNR to be more responsive to the changing needs of our students. We recognize the status quo is not acceptable. We recognize that there are disproportionality that still exist in our discipline process, and you've seen those today. And you've seen the data today. And you know that this issue of disproportionality doesn't just impact school discipline, but it also is connected to poor academic outcomes. And that honestly affects student success, which is the first pillar, really, of our strategic plan. We know we need to do more to reduce the amount of time students spend away from school and really ensure that, at the same time, all of our students have a safe learning environment. So what we really need to continue to do, and Dr. Duran will outline, is how through the SRNR can we continue to hold students accountable for their behavior? But to do so in a supportive school climate that does play close attention to the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of all of our students. I am confident that we, in this SRNR, are going to give our school administrators the resources and support they need to serve our students. We also need to provide the support for our teachers and build their capacity to respond appropriately to behavior issues and to discipline challenges. We need to, and we have reviewed all of our best practices around discipline locally and around the country, and we need to align our best practice with our policy and our practices in the SRNR. So this afternoon, we are bringing to you six key revisions to the SRNR that Dr. Duran will be talking about shortly. The first, you've already heard, is a clear addition in the FCPS SRNR for a vision for discipline. What is our ultimate vision for how we handle discipline in our school system? Secondly, guidance for our school administrators, and I know we have some of them with you this afternoon, that can help our administrators focus on consistency and on tiered responses to behaviors. Third, we are making changes to first-time drug possession and drug use in this SRNR so that we can spend more time working on providing intervention and supports for students and not getting them involved in our hearing office, or frankly, even later in legal issues. Fourth, in this SRNR, you're going to see changes to parent notification, strengthening parent notification, and really working to partner more with parents. Five, you're going to see a change in practice for students with disabilities, and really a lessening of the involvement in the hearing office in cases that are found causal. And then six, you're going to see clarifying language about, around reporting bullying and around Title IX violation, which we've talked about over this past year. We're going to continue to use One Fairfax as our goal, and we're going to continue to work, as we are in these changes to the SRNR, to apply an equity lens as our guide in our work. It is now my privilege to turn over the presentation to Dr. Duran, our Chief Equity Officer. Dr. Duran?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. You did a good job of setting it up, so I won't add any more precursor so that we can begin, since we are a little bit behind. But thank you that it is timely, that it's connected to what we just had in terms of a conversation from our discipline study, to think about some things we can do, to now actually putting some of those things into action. And so with that, I'm going to turn over to Teresa Johnson, who's going to introduce, who's up here at the table with us. And we do have various people in the audience as well who are here to help listen and also potentially, if there are questions. So, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Dr. Duran. I just want to say welcome to all of our principals and administrators that are in the audience. It's nice that we have actually principals at all levels, but also one of our principals from the alternative high school, as well as an administrator from our non-traditional programs, who also used to be a Sosa in case there are questions. Also want to say welcome to Deb Scott, who will be taking over for Mary Ann Panarelli. Deb Scott, our new Director of Intervention and Prevention Services, and she'll be starting on July 1st, so glad she could join us today. At the table today, we have Mary Ann Panarelli. We have Greg Hood from Madison High School, Anthony Terrell from Mount Vernon High School, and Maria Eck from Justice High School. So just welcome. They're here at the table to answer any questions that you may have. And with that, I thought as a parting gift to Dr. Panarelli, that I would let her do her last presentation for the board, so I'll hand it over.
Thank you all. So I plan to go through some of the slides that we presented initially, that there was really no discussion, to sort of quickly go through those, but to stop and pause and talk more about those that are things that have changed since we first made a presentation to the board. As has been said, we got feedback from all of you at that first presentation. In addition, the reports from the discipline study, we've had drafts of them for about two weeks. So we've been working to incorporate some of the things that could be incorporated in the current SRNR with the full knowledge that ultimately a restructuring of the SRNR would be necessary, but certainly something we could not do and get appropriate stakeholder input, et cetera, in a rushed way. So one of the pieces was to add into the SRNR itself an introduction where the vision of what FCPS envisions discipline to be could be spelled out. The first paragraph there is actually from the Board's strategic plan and from who we are, saying that FCPS promotes a responsive, caring, and inclusive culture, where all feel valued, supported, and hopeful, and where every child is reached, challenged, and prepared for success in school. And we all know that collaboration with parents is essential to reaching this vision. Then the statement of what we envision for discipline, disciplinary practices in FCPS are focused on prevention of problem behaviors, provide a leveled system of responses to discipline incidents that uses instructional, restorative, and age-appropriate interventions before resorting to removing students from class or school. This regulation will explain what those are. One of the large changes that you will see, I'm sorry, I'm doing multiple things here. One of the large changes is that within the SRNR itself, you will notice that the AIR report talked about Level A, B, and C. That was something that was in the front of the SRNR, the parent guide. Now we are placing within the SRNR itself a series of charts that outline in a progressive way interventions, as well as potential sanctions that might be utilized, and then aligns those interventions or those levels of interventions with specific behaviors. You will also notice that the definitions of the behaviors are no longer grouped definitions like disruptive behaviors, but instead describe a particular behavior that a child may be engaging in. I also want to say that in addition to the work that we have seen from the discipline study, the Virginia Department of Education had a year-long, a little bit more than a year-long group that I participated on to try to come up with a model SRNR or a model code of conduct. And these charts are aligned with the recommendations for the model code of conduct that they be included in your SRNR. I'm going to just do it from here. Quickly, we had already said that we were going to treat the THCA and the CBD oils as a form of a prescription drug, and so within the SRNR, it'll just fall with under the prescription drugs. In terms of school resource officers, again, the proposed changes have not changed since you saw this last. Basically, that the SRNR clearly states that a school administrator may not involve an SRO in administrative actions, school discipline, or questioning of students related to discipline incidents. They may not be present unless there's a safety concern or a need for law enforcement expertise. The other thing is that when there is prohibited conduct that falls into the criminal offense, FCPS will defer interviews until, if asked to do so by the police. And lastly, because there were a number of things that were originally put forward that people said that they would like to have in the SRNR itself about how the police would act, but the SRNR, the police are not our employees, so the SRNR focuses on what administrators can do in terms of their interaction. But there is a link within the parent guide that will link to the full SRO MOU that spells out all of those limitations. As Dr. Braybrand said, we have sort of clarified language around sexual harassment and harassment based on a protected category as being a civil rights prohibitive under civil rights legislation, and also that we used footnotes to clarify principals' responsibilities in terms of using the bullying harassment management system and when they had to report to the Title IX coordinator. So we've actually placed a footnote marker along each behavior where it would be required to report to the Title IX coordinator to clarify that a bit. As Dr. Braybrand said, there is a significant change around first-time drug possession and use. We heard clearly from the board that they wanted to have use considered in this new approach. And so basically, when there is a first-time drug possession or use, except in situations where there's been a substantial disruption to the instructional program or there's been endangerment of well-being of others, there will basically be a two-day in-school suspension, an assignment to an AOD intervention, removal for 21 days from teams, clubs, and other activities. There will also be a number of follow-up services to try to ensure that the students involved receive the appropriate level of intervention. So in part of the AOD intervention will be a screener where we can, based on the results of the screening, know whether this is really just sort of an experimental thing, or was this some sort of an early level of intervention would be helpful, or is the child involved at a level where we really need CSB or similar therapeutic intervention. Parents will be expected to complete an online information session. Currently, we ask parents to come at night, and we haven't had great participation always with that, so if we make it online, we can do different languages, et cetera. And then also, we are having training this summer for something called Cannabis Youth Treatment. It's CYT. It is a program that was developed to be used in schools. It's a group intervention program, and it is effective, preliminary data certainly shows that it's effective, with other substances beyond cannabis. So our intention would be to also include kids who were vaping in that group, in part because at any one school, we don't think we'll have enough kids at any one moment to run a group if you just do marijuana. But this is alcohol, vaping, other forms of substance use, and it has been, in the research that was done, shown to be effective. In terms of parent notification, the language of the paragraph, which I guess we will send forward to Dr. Oger and his team as well, is basically, in the event that administrator has a reason to believe that the student has committed an offense that would result in a referral to the division superintendent, the school administrator shall make reasonable efforts to notify the student's parents as soon as possible and before questioning the student about the alleged offense, unless the school administrator believes that there is a prospective danger to the student or to others, or that there's risk that evidence will be lost or destroyed. We've also added a strong statement about the written statement. No school official shall ask the student to write or sign a statement about the offense until the parent has been notified. In the event that the school official errors and obtains a written or signed statement from the student before the parent has been notified, that statement will not be provided to the hearings office or the school board. School administrators shall document parent notification efforts. So again, we were trying to be somewhat responsive to some of the recommendations that were made, to say that the parent notification component should contain more "shall" and to outline specifically what was expected. In terms of students with disabilities, and again, in response to their concern that our, what we had, our language did not explicitly talk about, although in practice, we had, our language did not explicitly talk about what we do when there's a pattern of misconduct or several suspensions together. So there's two places we've added this. Basically, we've added it when we're talking about prevention of disciplinary, of sort of higher-level disciplinary incidents. So if you see that this child's behavior is impeding his learning, or if there appears to be this pattern of misconduct, the IEP team shall consider the use of positive behavior intervention strategies and may take one or both of the following actions. They may look at the IEP goals and services to see if they are meeting the child's needs. They may also conduct a functional behavioral assessment and behavior intervention plan to better address that child's needs. The other change for students with disabilities is a bit more substantive, is a significant change of practice for us. So just as a little bit of background, when a student with a disability has done something that would last, would mean that the student would be out of school for more than 10 days, or would mean that the hearings office may be considering a placement other than where the child is at this moment, it is required under law that we do a manifestation determination review, which we have been doing. Currently, what we do after that manifestation determination review is done, is we send the results to the hearings office. And the hearings officer uses those results as part of their consideration, both in terms of the overall offense and how that is done, but also in terms of what the consequences may be. What we are proposing instead is that if the event was, did not involve serious harm to someone in the building, that rather than have it go forward to the, so that, let me start from the beginning. The principal will have already submitted the packet, because the timeline is such that you have to submit it quickly so that it can be scheduled quickly so that we don't have the kids out so long. So the principal will have submitted a packet. Typically, then, a few days later, the MDR is done. At that point, if there was not a victim in the building, the principal will be, and the finding was that this was a manifestation of the student's disability, the referral to the hearings office will be withdrawn. Therefore, the parents will not have to attend a hearing. Instead, it will go back to the school, where the IEP team can then make considerations of, are there changes that are necessary to try to ensure that this student does not engage in this behavior again? Because we've just found that what was going on was not sufficient to keep them from engaging in the behavior the first time. However, if there is a significant harm to someone in the building, and we also need to protect that child's rights, it will go forward to the hearings office. The hearings office will still make a determination that will keep the child at the same level of services that they were previously in, but potentially at a different location. The only time that you can make a determination that the child will get a different level of service would be if the parents agree to through an IEP. If in some very serious cases, we can use a 45-day unilateral placement. We very rarely do that, but we could do that in some very serious places. And then the third way would be if the division felt that really a change in services and placement was sufficiently important, they would go forward with due process under special education regulations to move forward the IEP. Then there were definitions. These have not changed since you saw it last, so I'm not going to go into it at this point so that we have the maximum amount of time for questions and go-backs. But basically, there were just some definitions to clarify, you know, where marijuana is and school resource officer, et cetera.
Done with the presentation? Okay. Now we have about, wow, 1 hour and 45 minutes. That is great. Not that we have to use over 1 hour and 45 minutes. You're welcome to. I have Karen Corbett-Sanders to be followed by Ms. Evans, Mrs. McLaughlin, and Mrs. Short. But could I make a request in order to be consistent with each other on how we use our 30 minutes? Could I ask each board member to exhaust all you have 30 minutes? You don't have to, but if you want to, 30 minutes, and then ask what response from staff and go to the next board member, rather than stopping at every 10, 15 seconds for answers to questions? So, Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Excellent. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the fresh look that you all have taken to the SRNR. I realize this is a work in progress and that greater changes will be forthcoming in subsequent years. However, there are a few things that I want to bring your attention to. One is in our, if you actually look at the regulation and what was drafted, in the introductory paragraph, I think it's going to be important to be very clear about our fresh approach or our different approach to addressing behavioral needs of our students with discipline, student with disabilities. And so I am going to suggest that we're going to need a third paragraph there, probably before the disciplinary practices in FCPS. And I would also suggest that when we talk about our disciplinary practices, it should be responses to behavior and discipline incidents, because not every incident results in discipline, but there may be needs for behavioral interventions. Secondly, I am concerned that we don't include the role of the ombudsman or even the special ed ombudsman in the SRNR, and I think it's critical that we include them in this. Additionally, when we talk about the, and I'm still talking about that introduction, and now back to the introductory paragraph, I do think that we need to not only include adult responses, but we should be very clear that the partnership with parents in the discipline process, because adult responses pits people against each other, rather than having a partnership in addressing the discipline, the behavior and discipline needs of our children. Additionally, the Title IX language, I'm a little concerned that we put all of the onus of Title IX on just the principals. There are multiple levels of mandatory reporters, and so if a student comes to a teacher, an aide, or anybody else with an incident, then that, there is an obligation for reporting, and I think we need to be crisper and more deliberate in our approach there. And then on your presentation, the discipline removal from sports clubs and other entities or other events, we need to be very clear that that includes that kids aren't allowed to practice, go to sports practices. And then on pages 16 and 17, I would love to hear a little bit more from you about the MDR process and how we ensure that the parents are part of that as a collaborative approach to the behavior and the discipline incident, rather than it becoming yet another hearing where lawyers and, you know, that it becomes a litigious approach. And with that, I will probably need to go back. You guys want to respond to any of that?
I'll answer a couple of those questions. I believe the ombudsman's language is in there somewhere, but perhaps we need to find some clarity in, or be more clear and explicit earlier in the document. The Title IX, the obligation of reporting, we can certainly take a look at that language. I think we were stressing that it needs to be the administrator who does the investigation. It's the principal's responsibility. And then the removal from activities, thank you. I think we can look at that language. And as far as MDRs, some of our, the MDR is an IEP meeting, and so parents are part of that collaborative practice and do participate and have a voice in the conversation. And if there is disagreement, there is documentation of that on the form that's sent forward.
And you didn't address what is a priority of mine, which is ensuring right up front that we talk about the needs of our students with disabilities and how we address their needs collaboratively with their parents in behavior intervention. I am a little concerned that we're going to be able to get a document by Thursday.
Could I, could I ask you and other board members as well, you know, there may be other suggestions as well? And we are scheduled to take on action on SRNR changes on this Thursday. You know, normal practice would be, steps recommendations, recommendations, unless otherwise by the, with the consensus of this board, with the specific language changes basically adopted at this table, anyone who has language other than what is being recommended by the staff is going to have to propose amended language.
I understand that, Mr. Moon, but in speaking with Dr. Braybrand, one of the things that came up is that our ability to actually, you know, we're not going to have this printed in time for August. There's a deadline of September 30th to get this to, out to all of the students, and I think it's more important to get it right rather than to, because I expect that there will be multiple suggested changes in this document.
Okay. I had that conversation with the Dr. Duran as well all year before, you know, all year today in the morning. Are you now suggesting that rather than taking on action on this Thursday, we allow ourselves a little more time with the additional potential change, further changes to the languages? Is that, I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying is that there are significant changes that have been made to this document from when we first saw it a few weeks ago, and that it warrants a more deliberate approach to it. And if at the end of this meeting today, we say collectively that it will take a little bit more nuance in wordsmithing it, then we should do that.
Okay. I'm certainly open to that. I just, when I say, when...
If I can just talk about the practicalities for a second, that's fine. At the beginning of school, it would be only online. It will not be available in a print version if we go past Thursday.
It's my understanding...
And it is required by the state that the parents sign, saying that they've received it within 30 days of the first day of school.
So I want to know if he, when do we, when is the basically dropped that deadline for the board to take on action on SRNR changes?
Thursday is the last date to do it and have a printed copy in the hands of parents by the second week of August. If we delay beyond there to the July date, I believe it's July 11th, then a whole series of other things happen that you don't all need to know about. But anyhow, probably the earliest that we could get it in printing form to parents would be the third or fourth week...
be the third or fourth week of September.
Is that still within the deadline set by Virginia Board of Education? Because that's within the 30 days after the beginning of...
It is, it is within the deadline to give the parents a copy within 30 days. And again, you can have it online available. We will not probably be able to get back from the parents, the signed thing saying that they received it within the 30 days. The law doesn't say you have to get that piece of paper back. It says that you have to...
Provide.
Provide, well, you have, you have to have a way to note, to find out that people got it, but you also, you have to provide the rules to them within 30 days.
So, do I, do I then assume that with, from your responses, that dropped that deadline for us, board, to take on action is actually July 11th rather than this Thursday? That will give us another...
You could go to July 11th, and you could have an online version available. Again, we have, it will be difficult to get translations done and things like that, but you could have an online English version available for the beginning of school. We will be asking people to do the translations, which we certainly, we can't do until you've decided on what the final version is, so they would follow a little bit more slowly. But I, we could, I think, meet the letter of the law, going as far as July 11th. Beyond that, no.
By the, by the conclusion of this work session, you know, board, keep, keep those responses in mind, and we'll make a decision on how to proceed at that time.
Yes, and I was just going to say, Dr. Braybrand talked with our staff about this, and while it would be, you know, a desire to approve on Thursday, we also want to make sure that it's all comprehensive and that the recommendations are all in there that the board would like. And if it takes a little longer, we're willing to make provisions for the July 11th, and then starting electronically with the paper copies to follow.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Corbett-Sanders, are you done with your questions or comments?
Yes. The only thing I didn't get a response to was, there was a commitment to putting more in on the ombudsman, a commitment on mandatory reporting for Title IX. And then, the question I had was, and clarification on the language regarding sports and clubs' participation in practices. But the question I continue to have is regarding more inclusive, positive language about our students with disabilities in the introduction.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders, as I shared with you in an earlier conversation, I'm a little concerned about singling out one group. However, we can certainly add that paragraph at your direction. Yeah, it will be at the...
Mr. Moon and Ms. Corbett-Sanders, if I could just interject, one thing...
Okay. I have Ms. Evans next.
Thank you. I'm going to focus on parent notification on Slide 13, since I have felt passionately about this for many, many years. As my colleagues know, we did make a change about six years ago that was a step forward, but it clearly didn't go far enough. So, I do appreciate this language being added, and I think the, the critical piece here is as soon as possible. I, I'm glad to see the before-questioning of the students about the alleged offense. I think that clarifies it further, but at the end of the day, what, what we're asking is that the parents be brought in just as soon as possible. So, I'm glad to see this clarified, and particularly that students won't be questioned until the, there's been an attempt made for, to find the parents and inform them of what's going on. I would, at the end of my comments, appreciate getting the feedback from the principals who are joining us today to see how you feel this would play out, if you feel that this is a positive change, if, or if you had any comments on it. But I, I think that this is, is good. I will say the one clarifying thing I would like to see at the end of the part about the written statement is, and I do see, for the most part, administrators do do this, but I think we need to specify that they will document parent notification efforts, including time, method, and, time, date, and, and method. I, I think that's implied, but I would like to see that specified. So, again, I would ask that to be considered by the board, or I can bring it as an amendment if, if I need to. I think that's mainly a clarifying change, though. So, thank you for that, and I'm happy to hear any other suggestions on how we might strengthen this, if there are other suggestions. I appreciate the change on the MDR. I think that keeps us more in line with what's my understanding of state law is. That's a positive change. And lastly, on this first round, what I will say is, I do have an amendment that I sent around to board members about making sure that parent preferences, if a student with a disability with an IEP is reassigned to an alternative setting, I would like to see the parent's preferred location given due consideration in the IEP meeting. I'm told by parents that doesn't always happen, and I do think that we have an obligation to make sure that in addition to whatever recommendations staff bring to the IEP meeting, that the parent's preferences are also brought there. And I'm happy to hear comments from staff and anyone else on the panel who would like to comment on that.
So, regarding the addition of the time, date, method, I think that's something that we can easily do.
Our principals would like to respond to the language as it relates to the, as soon as possible before questioning, and then the last paragraph.
I guess I could just add that as long as the, the language is preserved around the principal's judgment on danger, I think, as you indicated, principals are already doing this, and in the, in the cases where we don't, it's not intentional that we don't. As those of you who've worked in schools know, events move very quickly, and keeping kids and staff safe is our paramount concern. But certainly, this is something that, that we could live with at the high school level.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I do need to clarify, though, that I, I actually didn't say that about this particular piece on principals doing this, because we see quite a bit administrators not calling parents as soon as possible. We just do. What I said that they do is, is documenting their parent notification efforts, but unfortunately, we all too often see currently students questioned at length, witnesses questioned at length, written statements by, by witnesses, and only then backpack searched, a whole investigation done, and hours later, parents called. And that's just not as soon as possible. So, I, and before questioning of the student, I think, is the key point here.
I'll just add one piece of that, and I totally agree with what you just said. I think the challenge I see in that language a little bit is, you know, most of the information that comes to us about events that are going on come from other students. They report something to us, saying, "I've heard this, somebody else told me this," and even get to the bottom or even find out, is this just a rumor? Is there really something going on? Is there something substantive about this? Is that we have to talk to students just to begin to find out what really is going on? Did this really even occur? So, I find some challenge in that, is saying is, how do we, if we can't speak to the students at all, just to even find out, it could just be a rumor, somebody could have just said that, is how do we, how do we go on with, it's not really a true investigation at that point, it's just really just finding out what really occurred? Is this even something we should be looking deeper into and investigate? So, just the idea of questioning students, to me, is a little bit of a difficult thing, is how do we, you know, our goal is to find out the truth, and no matter what happens, and just find out some basic information. It's really not an investigation at that point, it's just saying, hey, can you tell us what happened? What do you know about this?
And I would point to the language that says that when the school administrator has reason to believe that the student has committed an offense, that's what it, yeah.
Or, if I could just add, or the other language that says that if there's a prospective danger, that's, and, and you have to have the conversation to even find out what's going on. But I think what the board is asking, if it, if you have determined and you need to investigate further, perhaps to pause and, you know, notify the parent. But it's not saying not talk at all.
Yeah, then I totally agree with that, too, is that, you know, once you start talking to students, then you find out more information, then at that point, you pause and say, wait a minute, now we have more information, now we have reasonable, you know, some thoughts about what's going on, then contact a parent, absolutely.
Any other comment or response from staff? Then let me go to Mrs. McLaughlin, to be followed by Mr. Scholz, Mrs. Rouse, Karen Tiscari, and Tammy Delarco-Fex.
So, Scott, you're still online? Scott?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Good, because you and I have talked about this. I guess I'm going to go to the first-time drug possession and use proposed changes. I do appreciate the language here as a progress forward. However, Scott, I will tell you, I am concerned about the language here specifically, so we're going to Slide 11. This language does not mirror what I've been saying for eight years on the school board, which is why aren't we looking at and benefiting from the Arlington Public Schools' Second Chance Program? This language is highly qualified with lots of adjectives and has subjective measures, specifically saying that it, that you can have a caveat to the first-time drug possession when there are situations where the misconduct has substantially disrupted the instructional program or endangered the well-being of others. Board members know that when we get the reports back, it can be subjective to the principal or the hearings office on describing those kind of incidences of whether they were substantially disruptive or they, they were endangering others. So, I will just say to my colleagues, since I'm supposed to talk first and then get questions answered, that that language in there is concerning to me. I, I am also aware that we were very fortunate that Teresa Johnson, Mary Ann Panarelli, met with all the county agencies, specifically the juvenile court system, the police department, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and I believe other county services, to specifically review the, the benefits of the Arlington Second Chance Program, which has been in effect since 2007, and yet, that's not what this language is. And I pulled up the Arlington Public Schools' school board policy on this, and it is very clear that any student who has violated what's considered a class-one misdemeanor in Virginia for a drug offense can qualify for their Second Chance Program. So, I, I, at the end of my comments, I will want staff to speak to that. And then, I am also concerned, and we will have it on the go-back, what are we doing about addressing the approach to vaping in terms of discipline and punishment, especially in light of the presentation we just had earlier today? And what are we doing about the challenges of sexting and appropriate images on the phone? And finally, I will want to go back to the whole point about parent notification, because I think it is about if it's imminent danger or prospective danger, that's reasonable. But I know of families that are calling me and saying that their children are being called in on things that happened days, weeks ago, and the parents are really upset that they were not notified first, that, hey, I need to talk to your child who's a minor, so I can talk more. So, my question to, to staff, maybe Teresa, since you were there, please walk me through, why does this language look like this versus the Arlington Second Chance Policy and Arlington Public Schools' language, which gives so much more latitude and mirrors what the Fairfax County Juvenile Court and diversion programs are?
So, I can weigh in on a little bit, and then Mary Ann may want to jump in. We still are meeting with our county partners, actually, this week to move forward, looking at what we can put in place as, as, as a county to offer for our students. And Dr. Braybrand may want to weigh in here, too, because we did go back and forth about the drugs and what would be included in this, and I think there were some concerns all around. Any principals want to weigh in about your thoughts about this? Because principals were very vocal about this as well.
If I could, if I could, Teresa, before, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for that feedback. One of the things, as I shared at the beginning, this is not a status quo SRNR. We're making more changes to the SRNR, I believe, than have been made in years. And I understand your time has been eight years, and for you, you know, it's long overdue, these changes. We are, we are making real changes. Is it exactly the same as a particular other school district? We're looking at our school district, where we are and where we need to go, and I think this is the first step in really taking an eye, putting an equity lens on all of our work. I don't expect, you know, you mentioned the language around danger to become the rule as opposed to the exception. That's something we need to monitor and report, but I do think it's an important provision. And part of the work that we've done, and I want you to know that I've done, we can change policies, the board has changed policies, and then hears from folks at public hearings that you have, the, the public statements, that things aren't being followed. I've spent a lot of time, our staff has spent a lot of time engaging principals and working to get not just policy change, but practice buy-in, support, so that we have the fidelity of implementation that I know this board has shared with me has been a concern. And so, I think we've, we've, we've made real substantive changes to the SRNR. It's not status quo, and we're going to continue to work together in partnership with the board and with our practitioners on the ground to see these changes become part of our practice. And I, and, and as Teresa said, if some of the principals there would like to make some comments, you know, that, that would be fine.
I'll just add, is I think one thing in that piece, too, you're talking about, and I totally agree with Dr. Braybrand just said, I think we certainly need more training across the board for assistant principals across every single one of our schools, so we're doing it the same exact way. I can say that we, this is one we've talked about as a high school principals, too, in separating out, it used to be separate between the possession versus use, because we know we get the phone calls back when, you know, a student uses something in the middle of a classroom, it's a pretty significant event in terms of the disruption, or something like that, and, which is concerning, because we want those students to get the help that they need as well, and it's just not punitive. You know, one thing I personally really would like to see around this is what steps can we do proactively for students to get the help and support they need before it even becomes a discipline event? For instance, having a substance abuse counselor in every single pyramid or every single high school, so that students can go to somebody, or we can refer, say, hey, parents, we're concerned, we're hearing something about your child, they get the help before it even gets to this, get to this point for the students.
Respectfully, my question didn't get answered about what are we going to do about the language as it's listed there that is highly subjective? So, you've got 25 high school principals alone, and then 23 middle school principals, and they're each going to be making the determination if it substantially disrupted the instructional program or endangered the well-being of others? How's that going to be defined? I mean, that's, that's why I'm really struggling with how this was going to be effective. And the second piece is, I still haven't heard, there was a glossary, cursory statement made, concerns all around. Concerns about what? Arlington's program's been in place for 12 years with tremendous success, 90%, don't repeat offend. What is our concern for looking at a 12-year program as success for us to have our SRNR model that? What, I need to know what the concerns are, because I'm not hearing it. So...
So, Ms. McLaughlin, two things I'd say. One is, we're going to monitor the, the use of saying it was a danger or substantial disruption. We'll monitor that, and we can certainly report that to the board, and if the numbers are high, we can, we can relook. That's, that's one. And two, listen, I think the, the, the most honest... That's, that's one. And two, listen, I think the 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 most honest answer is, our culture has been, we've had a different culture than the school district you're describing. We're making culture change through the S R and R. And, you know, this is the first step. We've got the discipline reports. We delayed the S R and R so that we could make changes this year instead of waiting for another year. And I think what I've presented, this team has presented, is a comprehensive series of real significant steps forward, maybe not as far forward as you'd like to see. But this, this is a culture change for Fairfax County Public Schools, and I think we we present a balanced set of real different measures, changes in in culture, and we need to monitor them, monitor them, and we can assess feedback each year.
Mr. Schultz.
No, I think, I think Ms. McLaughlin's point is a good one about, and is a training component for us. And I think that we can work with principals to define so that there are some clear parameters around what substantially substantially disrupted or endangered the well-being would be.
And lastly, you asked the question about communicating sexual things online as well as vaping. And if you look at the the charts, they're, the charts are set up so that, A, sometimes they're developmental, so that it says this would be a good thing for case six. And then there are sort of levels that you go up. And typically, again, it's going to vary from from case to case. So this is in the S R and R, I just pulled it out separately so I could look at it. And you have it also on your board docs separately. It tells you, like, a level two response, which is the first level of response for the, for vaping, electronic cigarettes, is the the most severe thing, if you will, would be an in-school suspension of three days, temporary suspension from school activities for up to seven days. The, if you go up a level to level three, the kid does it again. A level three sort of a response could involve a short-term suspension, could involve removal from school-sponsored activities for seven to 14 days. So we tried within the charts, rather than saying 30 days and then a year, to tier up the removal from school activities. And also, in each case, there are a list of interventions that could be utilized, so the administrator may just use an intervention and not use one of the sanctions. But the sort of top-level sanction in each case is the last thing that's listed in each level. So level three, the highest level of sanction, is the last one that's listed, because the the feedback we had from the discipline was that before it was just a list, and it wasn't very clear that even within the list, they kind of tier up, and you wouldn't get to that last one until you had tried some of the other things.
I appreciate that. Just for clarity of the public who's watching, then, the PowerPoint slide or presentation we have today isn't capturing all of the school year 2021 cha- or 1921 change, 1920 changes. It's, this is just more revisions from the last time it was presented to the board.
Yes. And and for things like what the specific, what we tried to capture in the PowerPoint was that there are now charts that sort of outline what levels and what responses, which have interventions and and sort of what responses might be appropriate for each type of infraction. And the infractions are spelled out as opposed to grouped by, you know, a drug infraction, everybody does this, you know, it it spells it out a bit more. And it is available to the public, it's on board docs.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schultz, next.
Can we go first to slide 13? Let me just say, this doesn't even come close. I'm sorry, but, you know, I feel like my colleague, Ms. Evans, was the closest to say, and maybe this is a game of, you know, tin cans and a string, and what is said at one end is not making it to the other. But I will tell you, virtually every case that makes it to the school board does not have proper parental notification, virtually every case. I would, I would hazard to say, it's north of 90%. So the the notion that as soon as possible still remains here is not a substantial change. And and to be perfectly honest, Dr. Braybrand, with you still on the line, the fact that it quote unquote, these are improvements, but not where we want, I don't understand. Why aren't they where we want? They should be where we want. This is the school board. And if the school board asks for substantial changes in the S R and R, they should be brought forward. And if there are consequences for what the board wants, you should let us know what those consequences are, and then we could make a different choice. But instead, this is more forcing the S R and R down the board's throat versus what the board has been relentlessly seeking, which is improvements in the S R and R. I don't know what's happening practically on the ground. And I'm not a principal, and I don't pretend to be one. But the notion that we have children who are being asked to, and the question is, where's that line? You say, oh, well, we'll ask enough questions, and then we'll stop. The problem is, who's deciding where that line is? Is it asking the kid's phone to unlock their phone? Is it asking for the kid's car keys so that you can inspect their car in the parking lot? Those are way beyond parental notification, and where a child needs, a minor child needs representation. And and I don't see it. I've submitted a list of motions that I expect either staff will accept, or I'm going to have a load of motions at the table whenever we do vote on this. The the next thing that I have significant concern that I don't see addressed here, that we forced on ourselves, is where where are we on technology rights? There was a major Washington Post article just today on how corporations are intentionally subverting the law in getting adult content into the hands of of teens. And we're about to place a computer in the hands of every single high school student. There's nothing in here about technology rights, and where we're going to stop investigating children's online technology use, and where their privacy rights start and where ours end. So I don't, this three-minute thing is not working. We're not, this is not good work, work, this is not good governance. As we get to talk for three minutes, they get to maybe answer us. We haven't talked about the hyperbole that gets into, you know, when we read hundreds of pages of documents in a, in a discipline, and it's loaded with hyperbole, instead of just, what are the facts? Give us the facts and help us make a decision. And substantially disrupted is one of those that gets a lot of pile-on effect of dragging everything in. This is not, this is not an effective way for us to be doing something this big. If staff wishes to comment, but I've got a bunch more.
Well, Mrs. Schultz, this is what I would say to you. I don't agree that the majority of cases, we're not honoring parent notification. I just don't agree, I respectfully disagree with that. We have listened to the board, and we have brought more changes to this S R and R than, I think, in at least a decade, if not more. And we have listened to the feedback. I think the issue about parent notification, we have moved it back from just the statement. I did not hear clear direction from the board, and the board has the right to decide whether we're not going to talk to a single kid about anything, anywhere, without involving parents. And I do not support that as superintendent. I think it is not creating an environment where our students have a innate trust to be able to come and talk to teachers, counselors, or administrators about issues of concern. We want an environment, part of having a safe environment in our schools today is having kids come forward to share information they know about other kids, or something they saw. We don't want, we need to have a proper balance. And I think the S R and R changes that we have strike that proper balance. If the board thinks that that balance hasn't been struck, and I haven't heard it correctly, then the board can make adjustments.
Respectfully, Dr. Braybrand, respectfully, because you're not here, I'm just going to describe to you what you could not pick up. When I, when I described that most of the cases that come to us have not had proper parental notification, I would say majority of the board members around the table, heads knotted up and down. So you didn't, you didn't get that. I don't think it's every case. I think the S R and R specifically states on on cases where there is a potential for a referral to the division superintendent and the hearings office. So we're not talking every case, we're talking about where there is a substantial potential impact to a student's academic and and other life by a referral that likely could lead to a suspension or an expulsion.
Okay, let's, let's go.
Right. And I, and I would say, and I'll make this my final comment to that, is just, we have tightened the language to say that if the school does make a mistake, that that statement is not going to be part of what goes forward. So that's our attempt, and really, the first attempt to be clear about if schools aren't doing it right, and, and there is an error, that it's not going to be used as part of the hearing package.
Mrs. Strauss, next.
No, I would like, if staff has some response. The whole point of us having the three minutes taken away from us as an interactive with the staff is that we get to talk for three minutes, and then staff is supposed to respond, not, we get bypassed and we go right to the next board member.
Mr. Schultz, I was going to let staff respond to your questions and comments until you begin interjecting your own further comments and questions. But if a staff has, you know, further comments to make, please go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on the technology use. So there is, in the back of the S R and R, a technology use document. And in that, it does spell out sort of school system rights, to look at anything that is issued by the school system, is used on a school system server. So it does spell out when we have the right to look at your computer.
Any other comment? If not, let's go to Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. Couple of questions. In terms of of drugs at school, how will sharing be treated? Instances where one student teaches another student how to use, how to vape, particularly with THC oil. The Virginia Code considers THC oil a felony because of the intensity. Do we still have to report under Virginia Code, which we've had to in the past, either drugs that are found at school, or et cetera? What do we do with the THC pod? Because this is sort of our new frustration. And we talk about considering disruption to the school day. Is it okay to to vape in a classroom? Is that considered a first-time use? What is disruptive? How long can that go on before it's considered a bigger problem? And I guess I'd, I'd rather agree with with Dr. Braybrand, that in questioning, it is very important that the parents are called in as soon as we've got a pretty good idea of what's gone on. And certainly, if a student has written a statement before the parent has been notified, then absolutely, that can't be used in the hearing. But you do have to find out what goes on. Kids are very good at hiding what they've done. And we would not have safe schools if we, if administrators weren't able to talk to kids and and listen to what they have to say. So those are my questions, group sharing, use in the classroom, when does that become disruptive, or is it, or is it not disruptive? And, oh, and also the issue, calling 911 when a student or a group of students have become very ill from ingesting drugs at school. Is that considered disruptive, or is that first-time use?
I'm going to go ahead and answer the question about sharing, and I'll let the principals talk about what is disruptive. We, in talking, well, and also the question about vaping THC oil, while it is true that THC oil is a, as we said at the last meeting, it's considered a category one, what do we call it, a schedule one, because of its intensity. However, we did have a further discussion with the county attorneys and police, and their feeling at this point is that for minors, they are unlikely to charge it as that, which is why we then included it as a first-time marijuana offense, even though, in fact, the, it is potentially more dangerous. At this point, I think everybody's trying to get their hands around this. And so as we were moving forward the S R and R and hoax of it also then working in terms of something that we could work with the police and the courts and everyone else, at this point, again, a pot of THC oil is sort of being treated as marijuana. A bottle, a big thing, would be indicative of distribution or potentially distribution. Regarding sharing, the the code that talks about school discipline specifically calls sharing distribution. And so we were going to continue along that, that same, we haven't changed that part in terms of what is distribution. In terms of disruption to the school day and some of the examples you gave, I'm going to let the principals talk about that.
I would just offer that Mount Vernon is an imperfect example, and I'm an imperfect messenger here today. But I will tell you that for us, there is no such thing as simple possession or simple use. Students are not born with marijuana in their pockets. They get it from somewhere, and they very often don't want to share with us where they get it. It introduces criminality into our schools, and we certainly, to the extent that we can, want to limit drug deals and drug use and that sort of thing in the schools. And I can tell you that I also hear from parents who are appreciative that we hold the line there, because they have the reasonable expectation that a student can come to school and not be exposed to drug deals or 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 smoke in the restrooms and that sort of thing. And so I can tell you, there are also studies that show that as we, and I'll use the word soften, although that's a loaded term, as we soften our thinking around this, that we do see increases of bullying and other things that students are experiencing in schools as they increasingly feel unsafe.
What about medical assistance that may be called because of ingesting THC?
Sure. As you might imagine, whenever a siren vehicle shows up, it really distracts students from the learning.
So you feel that would be disruptive? Okay, thanks.
Any, any other, any other comment? Any other principal?
In terms of the disruption piece, I think there is somewhat of a difference between you have a student who goes off by themselves, uses, where nobody else really knows what's going on until the behaviors surface themselves in some way, or somebody tells on them, versus a student who does it publicly in front of a large number of other students. The disruption is different, or is same type of thing. If you had a situation where medical emergency staff or have to come to the school, you know, things that normally would go in the school, they have to be stopped, and because they're interrupted, those are different things that would say cause a greater disruption than going off by themselves, if that makes sense.
I'm going to also chime in on that, because, so for me, that's exactly what I do. So it's weighing in on, is it a student, and no one knows about it, and it just happened that I was walking by the bathroom, and I saw it, or a teacher saw it, as opposed to, am I sending out a keep in touch to my families, because everyone's calling me because they heard about it? Or I'm going over the loudspeaker?
And so I guess that's the other question, is sharing. I mean, what do we do with sharing? Kids bring a Juul and an e, an e-cigarette, and they pass it around to their friends. What do we do?
So, so, sharing of nicotine products?
No, THC.
Right. But what I'm saying is that often it's nicotine. When you're talking about THC, it would again fall under, as with sharing marijuana right now, it's considered distribution.
So you would go with the current Virginia Code?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I have Karen Kizkamara, to be followed by Mr. Delacofex.
Okay. First, I want to, you mentioned the copies of the model code of conduct, and I'm wondering if maybe we, is that something we can have access to, or send a link? I'm going to do my three minutes, hold on. And then my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, mentioned the Arlington approach, which I looked up really quickly. And I think some of this discussion is kind of conflating the issues. Just my quick look at that, that is a program where parents, teachers, other students may notice a problem with a child. They they refer that child to that program ahead of time to try to head off.
Ms. McLaughlin, let Ms...
Well, I didn't find the school board. Let me, let me just say, the part that I found, which I just, if I may be allowed to continue, was, was, you can certainly look up the other one.
Okay, let's let Ms. Karen Kizkamara finish.
The point is, this, what I was looking up was a preventative measure, right? And 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 I'm thinking... I'm thinking, at least that's part of my interpretation of what you were saying, Ms. McLaughlin, was we, I'm not seeing the preventative measure as much here, as there still seems to be some focus on punishment, which I know we need to keep our schools safe. But, part of the problem in the issues that are being conflated is what we just discussed this morning, which is how much of this is subjective. And the language that we're looking at is maybe necessarily, but this is something that I think we need to look at as a board, is largely subjective. What we found from our discussion this morning is when it is subjective, that's when the disparities arise. So, or the disproportionality. And so, that's my concern. Are we building in something here where the disproportionality will continue? And if not, please tell me how we're going to prevent that. I'm happy to hear the school board. I didn't find that one. There was a quick explanation for parents. And I would like to see parents involved ahead of time. The reason I wanted to bring that second chance up, and we, I don't know whether we can do this, Dr. Braybrand, or not, but the kind of changes I'm looking for as one board member is we know that kids are getting access to this THC oil. We know, at least I believe, that their brain isn't developed enough to understand the extent to which this can be harmful. And so, what are we doing to bring them up to speed as well as working with families? That's more what I'm looking for. And I think that what we're looking at here is a modification of what we've done before, but not enough taking into account the dangers that we were trying to correct. I've got 17 seconds. I wanna say that also stated this morning with respects to special education students with disabilities, he recommended a flow chart. I don't see that in here. So, I'll do a go-back.
Real quick, so in terms of the, and I'll let Marianne answer some of the other questions, but with regards to the disproportionality piece and the subjectivity that could occur, we absolutely understand that that is a concern, and that is what, and even looking at, not just Arlington, but other districts that have changed their code of conduct in any way, one, number one lesson learned is you've got to be monitoring the data in a disaggregated way, and really understanding and looking at the implications around that. And that is precisely why we've got to get that online referral form where we can document that. And then, and as many of you talked about, I think you spoke to the notion of having the RAS and principals look at that, and they are looking at it, but they don't have the tools to do it, right? So, what we heard, what I heard loud and clear from the principals, what we heard from teachers, and certainly from the RAS, is we don't even, we have to create our own means of doing that. So, one, we need to have the tool for us to disaggregate and monitor that, and see where we see this becoming an issue. Then, we need further training. As Teresa said in response to Ms. McLaughlin's question, where there might be a question of subjectivity, we've got to provide clarity around what those lines are. And where we see, not a year later, on a regular basis, where we see that going off, we have to intervene and provide more support about what that's looking like. And where we see a school that's showing off the chart in terms of that, we've got to go in and support them to understand what's happening. That's really important. The second piece around the students with disabilities, in the AIR report, they did talk about the flow chart, and then, if you remember, they put that in their year two, because they understood that that's gonna take a legal review, and us working with all of our special education population. So, that was their year two recommendation, and that was also what I put in the equity plan as the next year's revision, making sure we have that in there. And I think you had some other questions that Marianne can respond to.
We can certainly send you the link for the model code of conduct. In terms of the disparity piece, I will say that probably six, seven, eight years ago, when we first were trying to look at this, one of my hesitations was at that point, who was bringing drugs to school was a very heavily white population, very heavily affluent population. And so, part of the concern was, do you make a change that only sort of impacts one portion of the population? That is no longer true. I mean, it's pretty, the use, et cetera, is pretty evenly across different demographic groups. But, and we also have many parents currently, and teachers, and we talked to, the teachers recommend a child, and then we talked to the parents, who are attending the alcohol and other drug intervention. As the principals have pointed out, they feel really strongly that if they had a substance abuse prevention specialist in the building, that would be something that you could utilize much more. We didn't include it in the SRNR, because in the SRNR, we don't do a great deal of discussion about all the things that we have in terms of prevention. We have an entire office of prevention, so there's lots of different things we're doing, but particularly around reaching out to parents to explain the dangers of vaping, the dangers of THC oil. We have been doing things, and we have a campaign that's sort of gearing up, because the things that we've been doing, we met with the PTA just the other day to try to look at ways that we could get the word out to parents even more effectively.
The other thing I wanna add, that AIR recommended, that we're also recommending, and how we look at the role of the Sosa at the high school level, and how they can assist principals in this work, and in terms of monitoring, so that we do not see the disproportionality that you're concerned about, that we're concerned about. So, how do we use that role more effectively is one piece. The other thing, and I wanna reiterate, and both, actually, all three reports this morning talked about, I know today we're focusing right now on SRNR, which is the reaction to behavior, but what's the proactive approach, and what is the curriculum that we need to put in place, the SAPs, that's part of the recommendation as well, is making sure we have one in each pyramid. Putting our time and effort into that would alleviate us having this discussion around the nuances of when a child does something, which obviously we have to, because students do need consequences at times. But that, really, our efforts need to be more focused on being more proactive, and that's something that's gonna take time. I think Dr. Braybrand called it a culture change, but you said it as well, Ms. Kizkamara, about mind shift in terms of how we approach this. That is the most critical piece, because no matter what words we use and how we define this, yes, some will be better than others, but if we're not really supporting this from the lens of being a positive behavior approach, which our studies talked about, and we're simply reacting to providing consequences, and we're ultimately not meeting our students' needs, and the safety of schools as well.
I think I lost a few seconds. So, I would love the board to be able to look at what the second chance program is for Arlington, because I've heard it mentioned several times, but I haven't seen it.
Okay, I have Mr. Rakofex next. But before I go to Ms. Rakofex, I wanna ask for understanding by my colleagues that we're probably going to six o'clock for SRNR. After that, we have a counting culture for two hours, which then will put us until eight o'clock. Just wanna see whether that is okay with my colleagues. We are about an hour behind. If that's the case, I'm gonna have to ask Madam Clark to provide the means for, to boost our energy. Sure, okay, we're going till eight. All right, so with that, Mr. Rakofex.
Hard stop at eight, Mr. Moon. You heard I said hard stop at eight.
Hard stop at eight.
Yes, okay. I've been looking at the red line version, and I would agree with Dr. Braybrand, that I think when you look at it in totality, we've made some good changes. I have a couple comments, and then I have two specific questions for the principals here. So, regarding parent notification, as we're looking at on page, I guess, 13 of this report, I agree with Ms. Evans that somewhere in here, we should talk about needing to have the date, time, and method used to, you know, when it was made. And then, this is my, don't answer this now, but this is my one question to the principals, is that how do you currently do it? And if we ask you to say, can you, you know, do you do it, do your, you know, your EAA do it, your assistant APs do it, how do they do it? And, you know, do you do it via text, phone call, and email? Do you do all three, or do you want one or the other? So, that would be your first question. Then, getting back to the specifics, like when you look at the red line version on pages 16 through 19, there's a DV code. I just find that as a parent, putting my parent hat on, that's like confusing, and I don't know what that means. Do we need a key? Can we have a key for that? Because that just, I mean, it's intuitive if you look at it long enough, you know, like, you know, you know, some of it is AL, alcohol, but, but we, I think we need a key for the parents, because that is a, those codes are intense, and there's a lot of them. And I think it should be at the beginning of that section. Page 28, and let me go there, so I know what I'm talking about. Sorry, I'm trying to get this all in. 28, oh, those were the changes specifically about, very specifically about what happens with single use. And I think that adds to fidelity of implementation. I think that's, I think that's helpful. I do believe, and this is my second question for the principals here, this morning, just as Ms. Kizkamara mentioned, we talked about, and I don't know if any of you were here for some of that session, you know, proactive preventative measures. Basically, key warning signs before, and this is taking it out of the SRNR a little bit, this conversation, but because you're here, and if you don't wanna answer, now, like, a future time where you could answer. You know, do you tag students in a certain way, or sometime, somehow collect any data in your particular schools about the key warning signs? Like, lots of times when we see kids at our level at the board, they have chronic absence, slipping grades, lots of, for lack of a better word at this time, insubordination, like many, many, not just one or two. So, if you could give us your opinion of if you're doing anything of that. So, the two, on the parental language, and your opinions on, or what you're currently doing as far as getting those key warning signs to us before they get to needing this SRNR as a reference point.
I'll speak to the, I think the first question was around, what do we do currently in terms of practice for notification? Generally, what we do at Madison is when we have some information where we think there could be a chance a student's gonna be, you know, a referral could be done for the student, is we actually reach out to the parent and invite the parent to come in for that meeting with the student. So, that way, we're all there together and having discussion together. So, it's just open and honest in terms of that discussion point, and that seems to go pretty well overall. In terms of the, I think you, you know, those warning signs come all together, oftentimes with the attendance, the grades. Oftentimes, other information comes to us that students may be using. We reach out to the parents, notify them. We often get the counselors, psychologists, social work involved. I do think what's missing oftentimes is, you know, and some students will even come and say, I need help. Or parents will say, what do I do with my child that maybe has a substance abuse problem? And I think, to me, that's a piece that I think is somewhat missing from what we have available right now, is that I'd love that students and parents could self-report themselves before any of this even occurs. You know, oftentimes, we're talking about the consequences, but what's the preventive services? Because right now, we don't have a lot at our fingertips. We might know the information. We're putting it all together. We're having those conversations, but where do we send them to get that individualized help?
So, more tools in your toolbox from us?
And I think we can make a lot of things happen with the right resources available, the ADS counselors, I think a teacher in the in-school suspension thing that can do work with students around reflection, or maybe it's a counselor instead of a teacher or whatever else. But I think there's other things that could be done. And you're talking about some other models that are preventative in nature. I think we would all welcome those kinds of opportunities for our students.
For us, it's very similar on parent notification. We do keep track. So, phone call made, time, date, you know, spoke to mom, time, date, invited mom in, mom came in, student wrote statement. And so, it shows a progression of how that worked during the entire process. For interventions, and we do identify at-risk behaviors for us. So, let's, for example, absences, right? So, truancy. So, we do run truancy circles at our school. We also run, as principals, we run our DNF lists, right? So, we look at those kids who are struggling academically, and we try to brainstorm around that. We have those, I don't know what they call them at your school, but at our school, they're called kid talk protocols. So, we have discussions around particular kids, and how do we support them depending on what they need.
For us, quite honestly, the emphasis has been on written statements. And so, we're very careful, as we've talked a lot here today, about what the timetable is around getting written statements. As far as interventions, we have, similar to what Madison and Justice have, we also have an attendance circle that really identifies a lot of the warning signals that students sometimes give off before they need this level of intervention.
The DV codes. So, two things. The reason the DV codes were included in this year's SRNR was because as we heard all the information about data, the best way to ensure that our data is comparable from one school to another is if people are using the same code for that particular behavior. So, that's why we wanted to include it, so that, you know, in some cases, you could argue that there's a different code that you could use, but we wanted everybody to use the same code, so that we'd have comparable data from school to school. We can provide a key. It's going to make the SRNR longer, but we can do that. Of these that are in here, there are, in fact, other DV codes, because you can't possibly write every single thing that anybody can do, but, or perhaps we can provide a link to the DV codes, which we could do. The other thing that you should be aware of is that as part of the model policy that the state has developed, their intention is to change the coding system entirely, so that the codes that you see in the SRNR this year will not be the codes that are used next year. The codes that will be used next year will be aligned to the grouping of the behaviors, so that the first set of behaviors you see there are things that interrupt the academic environment. So, those codes will be listed, something like BAC or something, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And then, the next set of them will have a certain letter in front of them, and it'll be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. So, they will be a different coding system. And again, the state is doing that to try to get comparable coding across divisions, so that it's attached to a description of a behavior, and we're not having differences of opinion about whether something was insubordination, or something was disrespectful behavior, or something was something else. But certainly, we can make a link to the codes.
I just wanna, just add that as a next step, Eileen, to add either a link, or, you know, if you can tell me how, because if you're looking at the paper copy and you only have that, then you won't have, you know, I guess you can always go online, but we can, if we can talk about that in the next steps, I'd just like to hear my colleagues' opinion on that.
Okay, I have Mr. Wilson next.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moon. I appreciate your consistent effort to keep the discussion in a tight timeframe. But I will say that this document in particular really deserves additional time for discussion, so that we can talk about what is our policy that we want to prevail in all the different areas. So, I'm gonna, gonna just, at the risk of burning off 20 seconds, I wanted to let my colleagues know that I don't think this is a sufficient way to discuss the SRNR and the scope of changes that we have before us. Okay, so, with that, I do have some comments made about the SRNR document itself. So, for example, in the introduction, there's new language that, if I were to sum it up in the second paragraphs, makes suspension a last resort, right? I think it should be made clearer to just say that, suspension shall be a last resort for use in discipline cases. I also think that if that is the, and that's a very significant change, and we should make sure that Chapter 2, Paragraph A, which talks about all the different circumstances, that we need that to be consistent with this prevailing concept, which we put in the very front of the document for parents. Okay, now, having said that, this is a 50-plus-page document. I don't know that any high school, let alone a middle school, or an elementary school, could be expected to understand this. And certainly, I think most parents would just pick this up and start reading it, and their eyes would glaze over, and they'd be like, I have no idea what this document is about, what we're supposed to be signing off on. And part of, and just as an example, within the charts, and I know Ms. Darrenak Rakofex raised this, we need to look at this from the eyes of a parent. So, for example, in the different levels, if it includes, if Level 2 includes everything in 1, then let's not repeat everything in 1 in Level 2. Like, shorten it down. This includes everything in Level 1 plus this, right? Let's have some ease of use built into this document. And I have to say that when I read this, and it says, this is our guides for administrators, my first reaction as a parent was, well, what does that mean? Is it a guide, or is it what they're gonna follow? And so, that, in terms of my reading it, and I thought, think that the leveled responses to student behavior... responses to student behaviors portion, which has the DV codes, is very difficult to understand, and frankly, it raised questions. So for example, if we have gang-related activity, right, and that's on the last page of the chart, it doesn't say that law enforcement is notified. Is that the case? Do we not notify law enforcement if we are assured that an MS-13 activity has occurred? I mean, it's not, the box isn't checked? So I mean, I think we need to, like, have this very clearly, as much as possible, revised so that we can understand it. There's several places where we change the dates for suspension length of time, which looks like maybe the maximum might be 21 days, but then later in the document, there's a, a date of 45 days of suspensions. And that is, towards the end, it talks about suspensions of up to 45 days. So which is it? How long can we suspend kids? And these are, these are pretty basic questions that I think we need to, to clarify in the document, and I think, so my feeling is, is that as one member of the board, we need to, we definitely need to take another, another period of time, look at this, have a conversation where we can feel like Mrs. Schultz feels, like, "I have enough time to have a conversation with the administration plus my colleagues to find out what we want to do," and we need to put this off. And I, I feel like, because there's a hard deadline put on us about getting the document in front of students, that somehow the administration, now, I feel like, well, I'm being pressured as a board member to say yes or no on a document that, that frankly, I think we all need to spend more time with.
In response to a couple of your specific questions, the 21 days refers to suspension from school activities, temporary removal from school activities. The 45 days is suspension from school, and that is the definition provided by the state around what can be considered a long-term suspension. So the, the 45 days is, is state language. The 21 days is referring to activities, not to removal from school. And in terms of law enforcement for gang activities, we would notify law enforcement if there was a violation of law, but a gang activity, the reason it's, it's sort of broad is that it could be kids wearing certain colors, it could be signs being flashed, there's a number of things that come under that category, and not all of those would be reported to the police.
Any other comment?
And changing the language, we can certainly do that, about the suspension, moving it up.
If there is no further comment on Mr. Wilson's questions, then I have a question or two. I think I have said this multiple times over the years, that, you know, it has gotten much better, however, still, the, when a student's discipline case goes through the system and comes all the way up to the school board, it takes certainly a long time from, especially families' perspective. It takes a long time. A lot of cases that come to your board's attention, if you look at a view, they are bold packet, we see the students being out of classroom instruction for a long period of time. Even though I firmly believe that every disciplinary offense deserves certain consequences, but I would hate to see the consequence to be heavily depriving a student's having an opportunity to continue with their education, classroom instruction, unless the presence of the particular student in the classroom poses a danger to himself or others in the classroom. As long as the case is pending through the system, whether appealing to the principal, you know, appealing to the principal, or appealing principal's decision, or appealing the hearing officer's decision to all the way to the board, that we should keep, we should find a way to keep the students in classroom to continue with normal instruction. That is my take. Once the final decision is made, whether this, that is done just on the, on the principal's level, or hearing officer's level, or by the school board, once the final decision is made, whatever the consequences that are imposed will apt to be, apt to be served, if you use that word, by the student. But until that decision is reached, I think we need to give the student a benefit of doubt, or, or otherwise, why would the students go through this appeal process, unless student believe that, that student is being treated unfairly by someone or by the system? That is why it is being appealed all the way. So whether our proposed changes provide the means through which we can continue providing our students while the case is pending, an opportunity to continue with the education in the classroom setting, unless this student again poses danger to himself or others in the classroom.
I just have a slightly different take on it. Your perspective as an adult is a little bit different than a high school student's. I can tell you how it plays out in the classroom. Greg here vapes in class on Monday, and he's back in class on Wednesday, and his classmates see him in class on Wednesday, and they go home and tell their parents. Greg vaped in class on Monday, he was back in class on Wednesday. That's a conversation that we have to have with parents, to assure them that classrooms are safe, sacred spaces for learning. And to the extent that we don't hold that line as principals, at least at Mount Vernon, it severely undermines our ability to do that.
Any other comment?
I'll just add the same thing. I think it's a balance in there, is that, what does it mean to create a safe and secure environment for all students? Because oftentimes, it's the students who bring it to our attention that something occurred, because they feel unsafe, or they feel worried about a situation that's going on, and they want to feel like, hey, wait a minute, I want to be able to, learning an environment that's free of some of those behaviors that's going on. So it's a pressure from both sides, is what's best for that individual student, and what's best for all the students involved.
Any other comment?
What's in the SRNR now, which was an adjustment that was made some years ago, was that the student can certainly go ahead and attend whatever placement was advised while the appeal process, so that they have access to regular instruction, but they're outside their own school, and I understand that that's not what you're asking for, but that's where it is right now. In practicality, some of the students who were sent to the hearings office and were in in-school suspension continue in in-school suspension for the pendency of the appeal. Other students who were in out-of-school suspension, which tends to be the more serious and potentially dangerous things, were, you know, that continues. We do provide some support to them through the Office of School Support out of, out of my office, but clearly, it's not the same as being in a classroom at all times.
Since I have 12 seconds, actually, I have 70 seconds left, Madam Chair.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, seventeen seconds. I'm going to make a comment, and then a follow-up questions to Dr. Terror. That, 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 it's a balancing act, absolutely, absolutely. But in-school suspension, whether it's in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension, that is a difference from classroom instruction. And I've seen, you know, time and time again, how that negatively affect a particular student's progress academically, and how their grades end up suffering. And then they have a tremendous impact upon not only achieving a certain level, but also on their college admission process. And to Dr. Terror, you know, two days, I mean, I understand, you know, somebody coming back after a couple of days to a same place, same location, and what kind of message that is being sent to the rest of the school community. I could understand that if there is a couple of days. Do you think four weeks, six weeks, or is it two months, three months? You don't think that's too long? That's where we may have a difference in opinion.
Mr. Moon, if I could just interject as well, I think that we have to also look at the length of time and how we're processing, you know, the cases. And I know that was a discussion that the board had last year on the length of time. We had an increase in the number of cases that go through the hearings office. I believe that some of these changes for SRNR will reduce the number of cases that come to, through the hearings office in the future, but we're looking at the time and length for processing both hearings office, as well as when the cases come to the board, and how long it takes after the decision has been made at the board to notify the family and the school. And so I've seen cases, and we've expressed concern where there's been a long length of time, and that's something that we need to study as well.
Okay, I have used up all my 30 minutes, so I'm not going to be unfair to my colleagues by continuing on, so I'm going to have some go-bangs, starting with the county representatives.
So to my colleagues, I'm actually typing up specific comments throughout the whole document where there's some need for clarification. But one item that I want to bring people's attention to is the search and seizure, and the need to ensure that we have parental notification when we do search and seizures in our buildings. Doesn't seem to have anything there. As well as, going back, I mentioned the mandatory reporting before, so I'll, I'll leave that there, and we'll come back to it. There is some conflict with the codes in DR 2, our, which seems to have two different levels of infraction as well as discipline, and so I would ask you on page 19 to take a look at that. And then the one area that I know some of my colleagues and I have spoken about on numerous occasions is the impact on graduation ceremonies. Seems like we've given a lot, really had a more of a restorative justice and behavioral management approach throughout the whole document, except when we get to the mechanisms or the events at the end of the document where we have that, you could have a seven to, huh? Page 25, seven to 14-day calendar days from, suspension from all activities, including graduation ceremonies. We then have, we have that in a couple of places, and I'll bring that, I'll send it around to you. And then I also want to raise the concern, we seem to have conflated different drug abuse events on page 27 to include ecstasy, cocaine, and synthetic marijuana as being the same as marijuana itself, and vaping, and I'm a little concerned about that, and the following violations on page 27, so if people would take a look at it. And then, again, on page 28, we're taking away graduations. And then, hold on a second. And then to address the educational placements during appeals, I think that we could address that by including in it the ability to either have homebound or school-based services during the appeal process, which is something that's quite common in how we address those concerns. And then, once again, with the VDOE and parents of students with disabilities, we might want to put some parent engagement language on page 44, but I will be sending these all around, including a paragraph to be added to the introduction on our students with disabilities.
So thank you for sending those around. We're trying to follow, as you were saying, but we will certainly review each of those and make sure that we revise those. I will let Mary Ann speak to the DR 2 on page 19 and the, and the chart.
Because there are two of them.
There's two of them, and I'll let her explain why there are two.
Okay, and then...
But certainly, if you send those to us, we will make sure and include the, the paragraph, and try and work, you know, as long as there's consensus amongst the board around those.
But I also think this board needs to talk about the graduation piece, because I know it has come to us on multiple occasions.
Right, what I was referring to is those little pieces that might need clarification. We'll fix those easily and add that, and then the bigger discussions are more of a decision amongst the board.
Typing it, typing them up, and we'll send them out in a few.
Thank you, and I'll let Mary Ann speak to page 19 on the DV, DR 2.
Oh, it's in multiple places. I'll bring it, I'll send it out to you.
In terms of the codes, again, the codes that the state is currently using are encompassing of many behaviors, because the code is like disruptive. And so, using, we had principals look at it, we had different people look at it, and we reached sort of a consensus that this is how we would code them. It may be, it shows up in two different places, but the consequence for those behaviors, it'll still be a DV code of a certain thing, but the consequence would be different. And then the other piece, in terms of the ecstasy, et cetera, what the language actually says is that this is prohibited, all drugs are prohibited in school, and the consequence will be, it'll be referred to the hearings office, except first-time marijuana, et cetera. So the, there is an exception for first-time marijuana and prescription pills, that does not apply to ecstasy, LSD, et cetera.
Can I offer a suggestion, then? Because these DR codes are a little, the DV codes are a little confusing, and because they are state-level, we should probably put a footnote in there somehow that makes us, explains it to people.
That's what I said, yeah.
That's what Tammy asked for, was a, some sort of a chart.
Not a chart, I was just thinking.
And we can do that.
Both, anything.
A key to what they are.
Any other comment from staff?
In terms of graduation, that's going to have to be a board decision.
Okay. I have Ms. Evans next.
I wanted to take a, kind of a step back. I was glad to hear Dr. Panarelli mention that we have a campaign gearing up on drug use and, and vaping. You know, we, we do need to do this. I, I think this cannot get lost in the conversation here. We do need to have a concerted effort and a concerted approach to combating drug use and vaping. We did a, a great job there in, in terms of tobacco use, and our, our tobacco use went way, way down there for a while, now went back up with, with vaping. So perhaps that, that is a model that we could use for drug use. We, I just think we can't lose sight of the fact that, no, we cannot just allow drug use in the bathrooms and in the classrooms and not do something about it. So we do have to be cognizant of maintaining safe schools. So I would be interested in seeing what exactly our concerted effort is, what that campaign is, and bringing parents in as partners, I think will be a part of that. Having more alcohol and drug prevention in the schools, I think, will be important. Going back to parent notification, I do want to make sure, though, with our first-time drug use, if you go back to 13, I want to make sure that the parent notification will still apply to allegations of first-time drug use, even though, I gather, that now won't result in a referral to the division superintendent. So perhaps this warrants some sort of a phrase or an addition to make it clear that, also in cases of, of first-time drug use, that, that the parent notification requirements still apply. So I, I don't want that to slip through the cracks, because we've changed the, the policy there. I, I will say, too, that a lot of this is going to depend upon implementing this with fidelity, that one of the things that, that we have seen is, is, it needs to be implemented with fidelity. People need to understand what as soon as possible means, and I, to my mind, if somebody comes to a school administrator and says, "Somebody's smoking marijuana in the bathroom," that's the point at which the, the principal or the administrator needs to call the parent. You have reason to believe that somebody's smoking in the bathroom, because you've had it reported to you. So I, I do think it, it will rely on, on how we implement that, and, and keeping to the spirit of parent notification. And lastly, I would appreciate my colleagues giving me feedback on the amendment that I passed around. I know with limited time, we don't have a long time to discuss it here. I think it's a, a moderate change to get parent preferences before the IEP team, but I would appreciate it if my colleagues would weigh in by email or phone call to me. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Ivy.
I just want to add that in the cases that have come to the board in closed session, if there was a parent notification issue, I have followed up with the school, I know, and, and talked, I've followed up before and after, you know, to find out what happened and to follow up... follow up afterwards. And what is clear is that we do need to reset and really define the expectations and do the training. And we have many new administrators, APs and principals, and I know as we work on training for the summer and the fall, this is very much so a part of the training that we're going to make sure that we provide to all school administrators. And a big part of that can be really defining what is meant by "as soon as possible" and what is prospective danger, and making sure that it's clear. Yeah, and consistent.
And I would appreciate an answer, then, to my question about first-time drug use and the applicability of the parent notification piece on there.
We can certainly add that. And regarding the campaign around vaping, we have been working with the Health Department and the State Health Department and the State Tobacco Intervention, I can't remember what the name of that group is. One of the things that has come to our attention is that there are no cessation programs in Northern Virginia, which makes it somewhat difficult. Well, not even for, like tobacco cessation has kind of gone away because of the need to re-divert monies towards opioids, et cetera. And so there really are just, the CSB does not offer programs, nor do any private group offer programs that will take adolescents, at least. We have told the state that, the state's trying to come up with something online, I'm not really sure what they're doing, but we are in continuous conversation with them, because we want to be sure that the messages that we're getting out to parents are, make sense and are supportive and link, but people are very aware right now that there is a gap in services. Again, this came up pretty quickly for a system to pivot and be able to provide services. So Stefan Moskow, who's in the back there, has been working closely with all of our county partners on a campaign. On vaping, yeah.
Okay, then I have Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Mr. Schurz. Could I ask each board member to limit to two minutes?
I'm going to do my best, but I'm going to go with what Mr. Wilson said, which is, I mean, we've got to get this right. Dr. Braybrand, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
So, I asked again, because, you know, I'm concerned that, and Pat Hines is one of our colleagues who couldn't join us today, and she and I have been having an email exchange about the Arlington program and listening to our principals, I'm really concerned, Dr. Braybrand, that in eight years of my trying to get multiple superintendents to lead with data, we've not been doing this. And I know you're trying to take us in the right direction, but I've got two principals here who are concerned about, you know, how we approach this for first-time offenses, and whether or not that's going to introduce criminality into our schools, you know, whether we're going to have more increases in drugs, how do we respond to principals? And so I would just say this, it's not Megan McLaughlin's word on this after eight years of championing it, or any of my other colleagues. It's Arlington Public Schools' 12 years of success. Arlington is highly respected, they have a very low recidivism rate by doing exactly this, which is first offense, you go through what is supposed to be intervention and prevention efforts. Our court system, our judges, our police, our Commonwealth attorney are 100% behind this. Our staff met with them in February, and a summary to the board needs to happen so that you guys get to hear what I heard from the Director of the Juvenile Court, Bob Birmingham. But it has been eight long years, as a board member alone, that I've said, please use data and best practice to talk about how we handle a first offense for drugs. And so, keeping in mind that what we're trying to do is not the school-to-prison pipeline, we're not trying to do what this United States has done, which is fill prisons with people on simple drug offenses, we're trying to get the help and the intervention to them. So, I'm very sensitive, as the daughter of a former high school teacher, and he was also an AP. I know your jobs aren't easy, I know you're going to get those phone calls. We have a job as a school board, Dr. Braybrand has a job as the superintendent, to help you, empower you with the language, the data, and the programs to show what is successful and help students get better. And when we don't do that, we make your jobs harder. So I do want to express my appreciation for you being here, to make sure you know I'm not saying wave the magic wand, just go do it, but I feel that as a school division, we have not served you well as principals to bring you exactly what Arlington has known for 12 years. And Pat Murphy, the superintendent there, built his career here, he is a huge champion of the Second Chance Program. I am begging you, Dr. Braybrand, please bring Arlington's data and their people to come talk to our people, so we can stop battling something that's been an eight-year dialogue.
Well, Ms. McLaughlin, and again, the pause was, the staff had told me to keep it on mute, so I wasn't distracting here, so I've been listening intently to everybody. Listen, you've had an eight-year term, I've had a two-year term as superintendent, at the end of my second year, this team is making real changes to the SRNR that embodies a lot of what you've been talking about. So I do believe we've made real change in this SRNR. You've also got a chance, as part of culture change, you have to, and one of the things we did, we brought all the principals in about a week or two ago to understand the essential recommendations of the discipline report, to see some of our own data, and we need to do more of that with staff. What you've heard today, though, among the three principals up there, is their honest assessment. They weren't, none of them spoke to me beforehand, there was no preapproval of what to say or not to say. And it's important for the board to hear the voices of principals, but also know that I'm committed to working with them. I was a principal in this system. I grew up under the, what you might call, the more traditional approach. We're willing, and I believe what we put forward today are real changes, real changes in policy that will result in real changes in practice, and when you make real changes in practice, with fidelity of implementation, we have principals at the table with you today. When we make these changes in practice, we'll have the real changes in culture. That's what the board wants, that's what the community wants, and honestly, staff wants that, too. And it has been a little bit of getting out of our own space, our Fairfax world, and seeing what else is going on out there. I got to leave for a while and see it. You, as a, as a board member, have gotten out through all the conferences and work you've done to see it, and we're bringing those changes. So, I think a little bit of it is about how, how much, how soon, but I don't think we've brought you in any stretch of imagination a status quo SRNR, and I'd argue that this SRNR has more changes in it of a substantive fashion than have been done since the SRNR was created. Of course, that's an arguable point, but it's certainly my perspective, and I grew up in the system. We've done a lot of tweaks. Today, I think you're seeing more than a tweak. Real, real change, and we want to continue to partner with the board. One of the things I want to remind the board is this is an annual process. We can annually, and that's what we're starting to do with the Equity Lens, bring you the data, review best practices, and continue to see whether we're going on the right track or whether we need to make adjustments. And that's the approach of partnership that I hope to continue in the years ahead. So I appreciate your passion around it, and I think we have been listening, and this is the first step in that process.
Respectfully, Scott, the one question I asked is, who, if anyone, have you and your team engaged at Arlington to talk to them specifically about the Second Chance Program?
I talk to them every year.
Okay, then why do we not have their model in front of us? What was the rationale for not using their model?
Part of their model removes the kid from school for three days and sends them to a seminar. We are trying to instead have an intervention that would happen at the school level, so that was a piece of it.
That's not the part, that's not the part I'm asking. Why is it we have all these caveats and who will qualify for it and who won't? There's this very straightforward, class-one misdemeanor, you can qualify if it's a first offense. Why not that?
When I talk to them, and it has been multiple calls, and I'll let Stefan come up and answer if he wants to, because we had probably four calls with them this year to try to clarify, because in different pieces of paper that they have, you found it in their regulation, they also have a flyer, they have a brochure, they have some, each thing's a little bit different. And so we had to go back several times and clarify which types of drugs were still to be considered, was it just marijuana, was it marijuana plus pills, was it? And initially, we got different answers, depending on who we were talking to. We went back and clarified multiple times. In terms of the class-one misdemeanor, I believe that that had come up years ago, and there was some concern about, I can't remember now what it was, because it was a few years ago, but the police themselves had questions about using that as a cutoff, and so...
It's in their school board policy, so, I mean, that's...
I'm just saying, our...
I'm just, I just want to be clear for the audience, it's in the Arlington School Board policy, which drives everything.
It is in the Arlington School Board policy, you're right, that it says a class-one misdemeanor. However, when we initially, like, I'm talking years ago, discussed with police, et cetera, there was some concern about using that legal language within the SRNR, and the direction that the state is going at this point is, and you can see, it's removed disorderly conduct, it's removed behavior that is aligning it with some criminal offense, and so we just didn't add that in there.
Okay, now it is almost 6 o'clock. I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 members on go-back list. Elizabeth Schurz.
Okay, so this is why this important, this document is so important. I agree completely, and I think the next step should be, the board should just ask the Arlington staff to come here, because you having phone calls and relaying them to us doesn't seem to translate. So I don't know what's so difficult. They have a first offense referral program that has a 90% non-recidivist rate. That's pretty easy to me. That saves us money. If we do it right, it saves us money. I'm looking at our own report on behavioral outcomes and the attendance rate for students the year after they, for the timeframe after they're referred for a discipline outcome. And their attendance drops anywhere from 2% to almost 10% after they're referred for discipline. If the very thing that we're trying to combat is attendance, which leads to successful outcomes, but yet they get into the discipline process and don't get a first referral program and get deferred, then we wind, we know, our own data shows us, we wind up with a attendance problem. And I just want to, you know, talk, because I was asking on the side on this vaping issue, so this is another issue, for three years Megan and I have been relentless on trying to get this under control. So if a vaping, if vaping incident, and I appreciate principalhood, like, defining the difference between a kid sitting out back in, you know, the baseball, you know, field, you know, doing something after school versus in class, or in the bathroom in front of 20 other kids, that's, those are different incidents. You know, a kid doing something, sharing, being shared with something versus having, you know, baggies and scales and everything, those are two different incidents. But if it's vaping and not THC oil, that's just an other violation. So I just want my colleagues to understand, our own report shows in 2012, other violations, we're at 2,219. For 2018, it's 2,186. We're actually down on other violations. The same case is actually for drugs and alcohol. In 2012, it was 298, 2018, it's 294. So I'm not sure, like, I have more concern that assaults are up 250% and disruptive behavior is up 200%. The question is, is that where, where in what is being presented to us, do we involve more significantly the parents as the primary educators, and we don't divert kids where we know absenteeism is going to be a problem after they get referred into the discipline process? And just so you know, 2.5% of our elementary students commit violations, 12.3% of our middle school kids commit violations, and 15.2% of our high school kids commit violations. So we're going in the wrong direction on being interventionist or being proactive. So what is it that you guys are seeing in involving the parents before we get into the discipline process, so we don't wind up with the very problems that on, in another work session, we're trying to fix?
I mean, I think you're absolutely right. Vaping is a major issue right now, we're seeing it with our student bodies, and I think it's across, I know it's at middle schools, it's at high schools, I mean, I can talk to a lot of different, I mean, they're learning about the dangers of that through their health and PE classes. We do parent nights, we even had the students do a video and put it on our news show and played it over and over again. I wish I had the right answer what the silver bullet was. I do think, you know, and I don't know enough about the Arlington Program, but I would say this, is I wish we had something where our students could report themselves, that when we suspect that of a student and we have a conversation with their parent, that we could then send them to somebody to get the support and help that they need. That would be my hope and wish from all this, is say that we have something for you, we know that your child's been vaping or called vaping, or we've been told that your child is vaping, we never called them, or a student who wants to come and say, "I'm addicted," you know, to nicotine, where do they go, where do we send them, where do they get the help, before we even get to the SRNR piece? And I don't think we have that in FCPS, and something I'd love to have. I don't know if that answers the question, but...
So currently, in five of our high schools, we do have substance abuse prevention specialists. Their role is to work with the administrative teams, work with the clinical teams, to identify students who are either involved with various substances or at risk with those substances. They meet with the students, they contact parents, they provide screeners, and then for those students who they believe need the supports that they can provide to school, they do that. For those students that need additional supports that cannot be provided to school, then they are referring those students immediately to CSB through a warm handoff. And the purpose of the warm handoff is really to get rid of some of those barriers that some students and families had with gaining access to CSB. So now we can get parents and CSB on the phone on that same day, workout insurance, workout payment, what have you, and then that student, the next day, can immediately get into a CSB treatment. They can access those services if needed. Sure, the idea or the topic of our AOD program versus Arlington Second Chance Program has also come up a few times. The programs are very similar, they're both three days, they both remove students from the classroom environment. I spent some time at the AOD, I'm sorry, at the Second Chance Program in Arlington. One of the key differences that I noticed was that their program brings together students from elementary all the way through 12th grade for that one three-day session. We do not bring together young students and the older students, because many times that can turn into a how-to session for the younger kids. Another stat that I just want to throw out there, for those students in FCPS that successfully complete our three-day AOD program, they show, for one year, they show, we have a recidivism rate of 4%. So that's very impressive. When you look at a two-year period, then that recidivism rate grows from 4% to approximately 7%. But still, two years out, that's still pretty, that's still pretty impressive.
So, this is the kind of work where, in the previous work session when we were talking about the behavior interventions, the fundamental thing is, why do we have a discipline system? What is the purpose? And if we have an acknowledgement that kids are going to make mistakes and get in trouble, and that I believe nicotine is addictive, then now we're talking an interventionist education mode, which ultimately winds up saving us money, because you create more successful students, they stay in school according to our own data, or don't, not stay in school according to our own data, and now you're not having to do remedial stuff later with greater and greater discipline and alternative schools and involving the police and everything else. That's the whole point of a mind shift, or a change of mind, that we're going to have to have around discipline, and why I think it's frustrating that we actually haven't been more leaping forward in this SRNR set of changes. And if you're frustrated, principalhood, that we don't have this, it should be in here. This is the opportunity for us to be more open to meeting the needs of children in trouble and treating them... trouble and treating them like the students who need an education and access to community services, rather than becoming an arm of the criminal justice system and upping our student discipline for punitive measures.
Any comment? If not, I, it's 6 o'clock. I have one, two, three, four board members, and hopefully, you can stick to your 20 minutes, please. Otherwise, I'm not going to be able to keep that 8 o'clock, 8 o'clock deadline we have. Mrs. Strauss?
That's okay. I will, I will just continue on to listen to everybody else.
Okay. Thank you. Karen Kies-Gamara.
I'll be brief. I think the rub is, we heard some significant information this morning, and it, I'm not hearing it necessarily being reflected in what we're hearing this afternoon. One of the things we heard this morning was, there is no benefit to a kid being out of school, and academically, those kids perform much, much worse. And so, I'm really looking for ways, and I know, I'm not saying a kid should be smoked vaping one day and back in school the next. But I guess I'm looking for more than I'm hearing today. And so, you know, I know that we, I love what you said, Stefan. I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name.
Maskel.
Okay. I'm trying to be respectful, but I just didn't know it. Okay. Mr. Maskel said, in the five schools, that, you know, we did have those services, and that's working. We're look, I mean, what are we doing to try to make, to try to expand that to our other schools, our other, at least our high schools? Because I know that there are certain schools where the vaping is through the roof.
So, we do feel like we did not get the finalized reports from the researchers until this week. So, we were definitely challenged with the amount of information that they provided. And honestly, we feel we made very substantive changes, and the principals will probably tell you they feel that way also, especially with our tiered charts. Because it does limit what a principal can and can't do, and it does try to, with the codes and the specific behaviors, really provide more consistency. Dr. Duran, we've heard the principals loud and clear about what their needs are and what the intervention and prevention resources that they feel that they need. And Dr. Duran did put in his equity plan down in the resources section, the request to consider funding to add the substance abuse prevention specialist in every period in a phased-in approach. So, that is something I think would be very valuable to all the pyramids.
Okay. And I'll just say one other thing. I think, because they did, the researchers did look at our charts, and they haven't looked at the whole piece here, but that was one thing they say, well, we did take an actionable step to reduce the number of, so it's not up to 10. It's very defined in terms of how many out-of-school suspension days certain violations can be given, and it's really tailored to the actual offense itself. And so, we did attempt there to make some step. But again, I want to reiterate what I said, that I think we still need to have a further revision. This is not by any means, or we need to end. We really need to align this to our MTSS framework. If we're going to do exactly what you're saying, is refer back to the previous presentation, that was their whole goal. And they did mention that, I will say, in their recommendation for year two. Because they understood, even though they didn't know our work, they understood it wasn't going to happen overnight. But their year-two recommendation around policy was to rewrite it and to have it more aligned to MTSS and to a more positive approach. And so, there are elements of that, I think, that are here, but definitely not, we're just not saying here, staff, this is where we want it to be ultimately, which is why I put in there for our next revision, we have to go deeper and have that alignment.
Ms. Darianakovacs?
I just want to make a comment. You're right, Ms. Kies-Gamara. I think it was, there is a lack a little bit between what we heard this morning and where we are. But I also think we need to be respectful and understand where, because these three principals here came to us today, I think they're very brave in being honest, and I think they're, you know, we need to work in partnership with them because they are hearing from other parents. I think Dr. Terrell was honest when he said, you know, and they are, we are with this new SRNR, they are going to be back in the classroom in two days. And this is, I understand from everything that we heard this morning why this is beneficial. But I also think we, as a system, need to understand that there are multiple parents with multiple viewpoints, and these people are here on the front line making, needing to balance it all and needing to balance a school's reputation, as a school that can or not be a school that has high drug use, is not a safe school because of this. So, my colleagues, I, we need to just be mindful of that part of the equation as well.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. And I think that Ms. Darianakovacs's comments, again, underscore why a more fulsome conversation amongst the board is really needed, because I think, you know, you raised very good points. Just a couple of quick questions. So, and I, I have to say that when I look at the gang-related category E, it says engaging in threatening or dangerous behavior that's gang-related. Maybe we just need to add clarification of when that would be reportable to the, to law enforcement and when it's not.
So, right now, what is checked off as reportable to law enforcement is what's in code. And it is, again, came from the state, and these are the things that were agreed to as the ones that would be checked off as reportable to law enforcement. As a practical matter, the principals are reporting to their SRAs when they see that behavior.
Okay. I think that's helpful. And then, just to make sure I understand, so with regards to first offense, and I'm looking on page 28 of the redlined version of the revised SRNR. So, it says, and this is B, subclause 3. The violation of this section shall result in temporary removal for 21 calendar days from all student activities, including teams, clubs, all school-sponsored activities such as, but not limited to, homecoming, prom, and graduation. So, this board, on a number of occasions, has had a discussion about whether or not we're going to let a senior walk. So, in this, for graduation. So, under the new SRNR, the answer is no if it's within 21 days of graduation.
Correct. I raised it.
All right. Thank you.
Any other board member? This is third, very briefly. Thank you.
Just a clarification, and thanks for reiterating about the graduation, because that is a concern of mine as well, as you know. But on page 28, we have a two-day in-school suspension for first-time drug use, but a five-day in-school suspension if it is associated with alcohol. Why do we have alcohol and inhalants, including a five-day suspension?
There is no mandatory suspension for alcohol or inhalants. It's a mandatory in-school suspension for the marijuana. The other is the principal may suspend up to. It's not mandatory. Some principals may not suspend at all. Some principals may suspend for one day. I just, I do want to, having lived through this since 2010, at one point, our SRNR spelled out for every offense, this many days of suspension. Everybody do this many days of suspension. At that time, that was seen as zero tolerance and not giving people enough discretion to make different determinations. And so, at this moment in the SRNR, with the exception of the two-day in-school suspension, there is no mandatory suspension at all. All the things that are listed as possibly suspended, including when you're sending someone to the hearings office, it says the principal may suspend for up to 10 days and shall refer to the division superintendent. So, at this point in the SRNR, and that was, again, in response to multiple years of feedback from the community, et cetera, that they did not want to have something that mandated a suspension.
I'm just concerned that the message it sends, which is could up to five days for alcohol infractions, but then it sounds like you're limiting it to two days for drug infractions. And it seems to me that that may be sending the wrong message. Both are pretty egregious on our school campuses. We don't want to remove our children for months on end out of our schools, but addressing the concern that Dr. Terrell mentioned about, you know, impression of parents, well, the impression of parents will be, oh, well, you could get five days for alcohol and two days for marijuana. That's what I'm talking about. It's a disparity issue.
I understand that, and I understand that that was what was the report that we just got this morning. Again, there is a line somehow between mandating something so that people feel like you are not taking into consideration the background of the child, et cetera, or leaving it more flexible, but then you have the possibility of different principals making different decisions. In terms of the alcohol thing, that's certainly something that we can look at and see whether that by itself should be changed. There are a number of offenses that are up to five days, is what the SRNR says. Again, statewide, most of those things will say up to 10 days. We made a previous change to the SRNR to limit it up to five days, but we can certainly go back and look at that.
I think that's one that warrants some discussion amongst board members.
Okay. I agree. I agree that, okay, let's make some decisions as to what, how to move forward from this point. Because currently, we have this scheduled for action on this Thursday. On this Thursday, you need to know whether we want to continue proceeding with this action on Thursday. That's one option. Postpone that until July 11th. That's another option. If we postpone until July 11th, whether you want to hold another work session, that's another option. She's not going to be available after a certain point, so keep that in mind, including a caring culture discussion this evening, that after a certain point, she's no longer with us. Keeping all those in mind. Let's see, let's see whether, yes, ma'am.
I, given, I understand, I'm sensitive to all the things you said, but I'm also more committed to doing my job more thoroughly. And so, I'm much less comfortable with rushing through for whatever reason, even if we have to postpone the caring culture discussion, or we have to set up another work session. But my, my thinking is bouncing between what I heard this morning, which was extremely encouraging and extremely thorough, and what we're discussing today. I'm sensitive to what the principals are saying. I want to be respectful of that. I hope that that wasn't implied, that I wasn't respectful of that. But the fact of the matter is, we need to give this thorough consideration. And so, I'm a little disappointed that we are just now having a work session and being told that we have to, that we are even being encouraged to approve it by next Thursday. I think it's, if, this Thursday, excuse me. Right. I'm completely uncomfortable with that.
Okay. I mean, that's the decision the board can make, whether we want to be continuously, you know, uncomfortable with what's on the schedule, or we, you know, we can postpone that to a future date.
Can I ask when a contemplated additional work session could be done? Because the problem is the dichotomy between the report we heard this morning and this. There is a chasm between what the best practices are that were recommended this morning and where we are now. And even on just something as simple as alcohol, you know, is it, you know, what alcohol? I'm sure that there are different kinds of alcohol violations, just like we had discussed disparity in drug violations. So, when could we, even with the schedule, fit in another work session and still, and still, are you saying do that and try to vote by July 11th?
So, okay. So, those in favor of keeping this for this Thursday, June 20th, raise your hand. Only one, okay? Others, probably opposing, okay? So, continuing on to, postponing on to July 11th, raise your hand. I want to see what is...
But is that with a work session in between?
And then, we will decide. We'll decide afterwards. Because we only have option between this Thursday, sounds like July 11th, or we don't do anything at all for the next year. So, July 11th.
We have to do something.
So, July 11th, okay? So, let's see, whether you want to schedule another work session between now and July 11th. Raise your hand if you support that. Okay?
Mr. Moon, could we check staff availability for July 11th or the dates that the board...
You mean staff's availability?
Yes. Actually, at the work session.
So, ladies and gentlemen, I've just...
11th is the board date.
Okay. Can I? I've just looked at the calendar, and there would be a possibility of on June 27th, we already have a work session scheduled. If we began that work session earlier, we could, oh, it's your birthday?
It's her retirement party that her staff is putting for her.
What times your retirement parties start?
It's 3:30 to 5:30.
Okay. The other alternative is on the, pardon me? No, it's difficult...
Do it earlier in the day, is what I'm saying.
Well, that's a little difficult, because we do have a board meeting that night, or a work session that night. But we have a work session scheduled for the 26th and the 27th, both of those. The 26th also has an audit committee meeting, and so that makes it difficult.
Madam Chair, may I suggest that, yeah, Madam Chair, could I see, because we'd love to have Dr. Panarelli still with us for the next, next work session. Sorry. Which means, we may only have June 26th, and audit committee is scheduled for 4:30 on the date. We, no, audit committee, audit committee, and then we have work session committee, committee reports from 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock. What if we ask audit committee to move the date, and we do this work session at 4:30 on the date?
Mr. Moon, you're sitting next to the audit committee chair.
I shall make no suggestion.
I would offer that she needs to make a decision on that, if that's possible, or we would have to maybe have, I don't know.
I mean, my concern is the fact that we are going to be doing three advisory committee reports that evening. So, this board's going to end up having an intense conversation on the SRNR, starting at 4:30, and then we go until potentially 10 o'clock at night. And that means staff also being, you know, with us.
We have a shorter committee report meeting the next night. Is it possible to move one of the committee reports from Wednesday to Thursday?
I mean, shift them over. Just contact one of the committees and tell them we need to move them to the night of the 27th.
We could try to do that, but I can't commit that we would get the advisory committees here, because we usually book that schedule months in advance, but we can try that.
In terms of the audit committee meeting, I mean, that's not just my schedule, it's the schedule of three other board members and two other citizen committee members. So, I'm concerned about having to now upend six people's schedules on that one to try and figure out how we are going to squeeze this in.
Our challenge on the 27th is that there's a retirement event, which is when we say goodbye to Ms. Panarelli. And so...
Madam Chair, could you take a look at June 24th, Monday? 4:30ish, 5, 4:35? Otherwise, we have to go into July. And July, a lot of people go on vacation for the July 4th weekend. Then, we have a meeting. the July 4th weekend, then we have a meeting.
Yeah.
We want to do a good job, so we just got to find the time to do it.
Could people meet as early as the, as 4 o'clock on the 24th and do a?
I'm willing to do a 4 o'clock.
Preferably for 4:30. Preferably 4:30.
Preferably 4:30.
Let's see whether we can do a 4:30 on June 24th.
Is this the only work session?
That's the only work session. Is it okay, June 24th?
Yeah, that works for us.
June 24th at 4:30, raise your hand if you can support that. Okay, then let's schedule that June 24th for the follow-up work session. And hopefully, by that time, you know, staff will come back with additional language for board's consideration. Board members who would have considered their own amendments to propose and share the language with the full board. With that, let's go to the next steps, and hopefully, we can go through this quickly so that we can get to caring culture. Next steps, please. How many we have? Next steps?
That's it.
Okay. Please do not add any more for now.
No, that's not true, because, I mean, if staff didn't capture what we were saying, it's going to get added.
Sure. Thank you. Corvus Sanders?
Mr. Moon, I actually sent around a summary of every single page where just some were minor little changes.
I haven't seen that.
And so we can either go through each one of them, or if people can go through it, see if they, how they feel about it. But the primary areas of concern are, obviously, the language regarding the Title I mandatory reporting, the ombudsman, the special education, and then a decision amongst the board regarding how we want to handle graduation, because I think that is something that we should all.
I would, I would ask that if we were going to have a conversation about graduation, it's not just graduation, it's graduation-related activities?
Correct. That's what I mean.
Okay.
So I'm perfectly fine if people want to respond to my email, or you can just cut and paste my whole email and put it up there, but that seems a little silly.
I think, I think, I saw very quickly your suggestions. It's pretty lengthy. I think those exactly those are the things that we need to discuss at the follow-up session, rather than trying to do it within the next two minutes.
So if staff, if staff can do the, the minor nuances that they say, yeah, we can do this, this, and this, that makes it.
You could do that.
Oh, do not, please do not leave those there. Let's go, let's go. Corvus Sanders, please, number one.
Yes, we need information about the ombudsman, both the general ombudsman as well as the special education ombudsman.
Okay. Number two, Ms. Corvus Sanders?
And the next one is clarify that they're unable to attend practices as part of the discipline.
I'm sorry, I think we should have a discussion about that, because the question is, if there's a discipline that happens sometime in the, in the spring semester, do we carry that over to August? I mean, I think that needs to be part of our discussion.
I think it's just a clarifying.
It's clarifying. It's for the seven to 14 days if they're.
And we'll discuss.
That was the only reason, is that there was nuance there. It included teams and everything, but it wasn't specific.
Okay, so you're talking about that, that, what, what did you all call it? You didn't call it a?
Temporary removal.
Temporary removal.
Seven to 14.
So if you, if you can add temporary removal, because we're not talking about a suspension at that point.
Yes.
The other thing I'm talking about is discussing the suspension over the summer, applying to the next sports year.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Ms. Corvus Sanders, could you take a look at number three?
The language on disabilities in the, in the introduction, that's fine. And then mandatory reporting for Title IX, there are two spots that I call out in my note to everybody. Yes, that's fine.
Okay, number five?
And then what's not in there is the language regarding graduations and other things. I don't know if you need me to reference those? Or are we going to?
We'll discuss graduation at the next work session.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I've had parental notification as a greater feedback from the staff on an enhanced parental notification model that isn't just a, as the, as the earlier-in-the-day presentation said, we should be more prescriptive, not permissive in our language, more shalls than more shoulds.
Okay. Could you, could you go through number five first? Karen Keys-Gamarra?
That's fine.
Okay. Number, number six, Mr. Nakofex?
I would just like the board's opinion that if there's a link, it's only if you have an electronic version. I would like it to be, I know that will add dimension to the, to the document, but I think it should be in the paper document as well, rather than just the link. What do my colleagues think?
Agreed.
Yes, okay, so then I would like add a link and, what do I want to say? Add link and key code in both the online and paper, you know, paper document for state code references.
Okay. Number seven, Mrs. Schultz?
I would not say just staff, I would extend the invitation to their board as well, because I would certainly appreciate having a conversation with one of their board members about the efficacy of their program.
So do you want them to come to the next work session? Is that what you're asking?
It would be great if we could pull it off. It would be great if we could pull that off, yes.
Okay, number eight?
Just Mr. Moon, real quickly, because that was something that I, I was asking for, for her number seven. So Assistant Superintendent Cynthia Johnson over in Arlington, who knows the program. So I think if we reached out to the Assistant Superintendent and asked her if she has someone on her staff who could maybe join us, then she could come speak to it.
I don't think we should put people's names in next step. I think just staff is appropriate, and then we'll reach out, you know. We just don't want to put people's names in next step.
No, Ms., Ms. Schultz, I agree. I just wanted the context of understanding that they have a point person that we could see if, I mean, to me, if they can't send somebody, Mr. Moon, I would like for number seven, that if they can even provide a summary of their program, because we need something to drive the conversation. I keep getting emails from colleagues who, they, they don't know the program, they don't understand it, they, they want to hear it directly from Arlington, they don't want to have, you know, delivered secondhand, so.
With, with all due deference, while providing a summary is a poor second substitute, if they can't attend, I still want that invitation to stand for some future point, because if we're not going to resolve it now, it doesn't mean I don't want us to be able to resolve it eventually.
Mrs. Schultz, that's your language, Sotan. You have to be, you have to be satisfied with what's up there.
That's a reasonable compromise for now.
Ms. Schultz, um, Dr. Panarelli is asking for clarification on number eight, in terms of what do you want us to bring back on the 24th?
Well, right now, everything is still in the permissive language and what you all have presented in the changes to the SRNR. And I don't know if Dr. Bray Brown is still in the, in the, in the, in the internet sphere out there, but, you know, this is not much of a leap forward in terms of involving parents in the discipline process of their children. And we're getting ready to hand to every high school student a government-issued computer. You know, the role of parents and our ability to involve them in the discipline process, GPAs go down, attendance go down, everything goes down as soon as a kid has a discipline infraction. And the, the notion that we are proactively and with great intentionality reaching parents and talking to parents before children are giving oral statements, writing statements, writing confessions, turning over their electronic devices and opening them up and, and divulging evidence that will, you know, tie them up in the discipline process, opening their cars. I mean, parents need to be involved in their minor child's discipline process. And unless it's an exigent circumstance, I mean exigent, you know, look, we, you know, there's a gun in the school. I got it. You got to, you got to figure out where that is. If a kid shared a joint with another kid in the bathroom, you do not have an exigent circumstance. There is no exigent circumstance. Nobody is at risk. Nobody, the school is not at risk, it's not disruptive, it's not anything. If there's a kid who is being put in the back of an ambulance, that's exigent circumstances. You got to know.
I think, I think we heard enough on that point.
The only, the only reason I am confused is that the language now says, as soon as possible and before questioning the student, the principal shall notify the parents as soon as possible and before questioning the student. I'm sorry, it says should. It says should.
So, so Ms. Schultz.
We can make it shall.
This is Dr. Bray Brown. My, my feeling on this matter, we've changed the language. We have significantly changed the language and talked about if we err. If you have additional language you would like us to look at?
It says shall.
We can look at it. We could choose to amend or leave it alone, and you all can discuss it at the next work session.
Okay, Dr. Bray Brown, it says shall, so we'll go to the next one. Number nine, Evans. Is that, is the language okay? Okay, number 10. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, I have mine for number 11.
Okay.
I would like to have staff provide a comprehensive summary of their February 2019 meeting with all of the Fairfax County agencies in discussion of the, the second chance program that Arlington has and how Fairfax County currently handles their own diversion on first-time drug offenses. Because I had the benefit of hearing from our, our Director of the Juvenile Court, because I've known him for over 20 years, but the school board members haven't had a chance to hear how that meeting went, what, and I believe, Ms. Johnson, you try to meet with them fairly frequently, but I, you know, it's my understanding that judges are very supportive of all this, and I think the board would benefit from hearing the work, the great work that Teresa is trying to do with partnering with them.
Okay, does that, does that meet your need?
You can say Arlington's second chance program.
Anything, anything else from anybody else?
I'm sorry, I'm going back to page 35 of the SRNR, B, C, B. In the event a school administration has reason to believe that student has committed an offense that would result in a referral to the division superintendent, the school administrator shall make reasonable efforts to notify the student's parents as soon as possible and before questioning the student about alleged events, unless, it, it doesn't say that they shall, it says as soon as possible. Shall make reasonable efforts. That's not, you don't need, you don't need to question that student, and you don't need to accept anything from them until you've reached the parents, unless it's exigent circumstances.
So it says shall make reasonable efforts to reach the parents.
Mm-hmm.
To notify the parents as soon as possible and before questioning the student.
So.
I think, I think maybe the concern is reasonable efforts. It's different, that's different than shall notify the parents, because that leaves.
My suggestion is, we have another work session to further discuss that. If anybody has to make an amendment to the language, can propose the language.
Exactly.
Okay? Okay, with that, if there's nobody else, let's see whether there's any objection to any of these next steps from any board member. If not, this part of the work session is over, John. I want to thank, especially, especially three high school principals here who had spent, what, the last three hours with us and answering questions, you know, how deeply we all care about our students' well-being and their success. We are, we are all, we all have a same mission and same goals.
So with what's on the next steps, and if you have anything that you want in terms of language, like Ms. Corvus Sanders did, which was very helpful, we would like to get that soon, because we, our goal is to then incorporate what we can and have this posted by Friday afternoon at the latest. So I know it's not long, but at least you would then have over the weekend, if you wanted to, or at least it would be available for the public over the weekend to see by Monday afternoon, so.
I would just ask that the staff try to incorporate as much as possible, because you have to vote seven, seven, you have to vote seven to get something in versus seven to get something out.
Okay, sure.
We will make every attempt to incorporate as much as possible with those areas that need discussion, like the graduation, some of those we will not, we want, that's a discussion you should make, but we will do that. So my only point is, if you have any language following the model Ms. Corvus Sanders did, that's very helpful for us to be able to do that and make those decisions, and what we could put in easily, and what we need to bring back for discussion on the 24th.
Can you also provide, with what I gave you, if you can tweak it so that it works, that's better, and what Elizabeth gave, rather than just saying, no, that doesn't work, and move on?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we can show that through a red line version from this one to next one, yeah.
And, and Mr. Moon, if I, if I might, if we're wrapping up, I want to thank the entire team. We did do a lot today. You heard a lot today. You engaged in a lot of meaningful work. And I think something Karen Keys-Gamarra said, that I've reflected on in my second year, is continuing to be more strategic in partnering with you about the school board calendar. Frankly, you know, Dr. Durand and I have talked that when we decided to do the discipline report and, and create a, you know, a year to do it, you know, reflecting that the SRNR typically comes in April or May, and then we really put it here in June so that we could get the discipline report. And in a sense, we, we gave ourselves a never-winder of time if we wanted to make changes for next year, and we did. But I do think, as we move forward, having a more strategic lens, as we try to do one Fairfax across all of our areas, we've got to be even more, I've got to be even more intentional in planning and working with the board leadership in the calendar, and I commit.